All right, I'll call the March State Board of Education meeting to order. And as usual, we will start our meeting with a pledge of allegiance to the fine. A pledge allegiance to the fine.
...................................................
Have the usual announcement, if you haven't signed in yet, please, there's a sign-in sheet on the table by the door. We usually start our meetings by going around and self-introducing ourselves, but I want to start a little differently this morning and welcome our newest member, Peter Pelts. And I'm really excited about you joining this board, and I know with your legislative and educational background that you're going to contribute immensely, so congratulations and welcome. I'm Stephen Morris from New Fane in southern Vermont and Chair of the State Board of Education, as of now, anyway.
I'm Sean Marie Oler from Beddington.
Krista Huling from Jeffersonville.
Stacy Weinberger Burlington.
Dylan McAllister Greensburg.
Bonnie John St. Not Villa.
Mark Tarns Middlebury.
Peter Pelts from Woodbury.
Bill Mathis Goshen.
Rebecca Holcomb, Secretary of Education.
Well, thank you all, and we have a lively agenda today, and I look forward to it. The second item on the agenda is the public to be heard, and I know John Castle wants, would like to be heard, so would you please take the table? And gentlemen, just for the record, if you'd introduce yourselves, that would be great.
Good to see folks again.
Hi.
John Castle, Superintendent of Schools now in North Country Supervising Union, formerly at Brooklyn Northeast.
Carrie's here too, as well.
Yeah, I'm Carrie Delian, head of schools at Rivendell Interstate School District and Principal of Rivendell Academy.
And it was interesting, we were visiting Rebecca before the meeting, and she was surprised it took us so long to find each other. We had a little online dating, and we've only met today for the first time, but I think we have-
How's it going so far?
I'm glad you could bring us together. Sort of match.com, you know, State Board of Education.
Why don't you get to the substance of what you want to present?
So we're here to talk about standardized testing, S-Back, and continued concerns, and for the first time, I actually had a chance to read your resolution, so I feel positive about moving in the right direction, but I think we conferred very briefly, and we still feel it feels, falls very short of where we need to be. And I know Carrie's provided some statements, and I'll let him take the lead on that, and I may piggyback a little.
So I, this weekend, compiled some numbers on kind of what testing looks like at the school level in a seven through 12 school. And I looked at staff time, I looked at student time testing, here's what I came up with. Since October, involving preparation for S-Back testing, and I itemized every person in every situation, the total from October till last Tuesday, and this is a conservative estimate, is 396-person hours. That's every person in meetings and discussions and workshops and everything else, 396 hours. I looked at all the standardized testing that will happen in school this year. This includes the fact that all our juniors and our 10th and 11th graders, we give the PLAN test, that's the pre-ACT test, and the PSAT, which is the pre-SAT test, and we pay for that for the students. It's a total of 72 hours of testing, okay? So my daughter took the SAT on Saturday, she's in 11th grade. She's got finals Wednesday, Thursday, and Friday for her classes at Rivendell. On Monday, she'll start S-Back testing, Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday, Friday, we have a parent day, and then the testing will continue the next Monday and Tuesday. It's a lot of testing that goes on, and it's a lot of time devoted to standardized testing. It's a lot of staff time. It's a big cost. It's a, if we paid people $25 an hour, which is what we pay our teachers if they're working on curriculum for extra above and beyond their contracted time, it would come to about $10,000. For a small school like ours, that's a lot of, that's a lot of bread. And so we're leaving out what is costing the state, and I don't even know, I've tried to find that number, I can't find that number anywhere. But I'm curious as to what, what the state cost is to administer and score the S-Back to all students in each academic year. And my, my major issue is what are we getting for this? And how is it really going to benefit instruction? And we have a history of this, we have 12 years of standardized testing, 12 years, and we're in the habit of it now. So teachers who are entering the field have gone through state testing at this point. We have a whole change of culture as a result of 12 years of testing, driven by federal policy. And we're, it's habitual now, and there's a problem with that.
Why is it so common?
If you look at the amount of time and effort, if we compare S-Back testing at the state level, at the school level, compare it to the amount of time and effort devoted to supporting personal learning plans, for example, what's that comparison look like? We got a $10,000 grant from the state last year for PLP planning. It's the same amount of money we were roughly spending to prepare for the S-Back. I would argue that the PLP $10,000 is money better spent. I think there's a, I want to find the information, what's the connection between standardized testing and improved learning? What is it? It's hard to find. It's hard for me to know what that connection is. Do I look, have I looked at the results of kneecap testing during my five years of Rivendell? Of course I have. But the decisions, and here's, I'll give you a very good example. We fell in the improvement, in need of improvement in math three years ago. Okay, then we had to start the whole Green Mountain Star process. We went through that, we completed it. The next year, our math scores had rocketed, and they've stayed strong for two years. Why? Because I had made changes prior. The scores dropped, that was a legacy I inherited. I saw what needed to be changed, I changed it. The trap was already set, I fell in need of improvement. The next year, scores were already up, not based on some micro-analysis of the kneecap scores, but what I knew needed to be changed and to improve math instruction and math learning at the school. Are we done? Absolutely not. Absolutely not. I'm awash in data. I know where every kid is struggling and for what reason in the entire school. That's the beauty of Vermont's small schools. We've got 227 through 12th graders. You would be hard-pressed to name any one of the kids in the school and not have me be able to tell you kind of generally how they perform in what subjects and why. So besides the investment of time and money being, I think, exorbitant, it's exorbitant in terms of what the payoff is, and I think it's very little in terms of improving learning. And of course, it's a compounded issue of the amount of time kids are spending taking standardized tests. We need a whole different type of assessment. If we have to do a statewide assessment, I think we need to just jettison the whole notion of standard, of a computer-driven standardized test, and look at different models of assessment that are more educative in nature, that involve teachers more in the process of analyzing those test results because they feel some investment in it. One straightaway validity threat on the S-Back assessment and a lot of standardized tests, the kids aren't motivated to take them in general. I gave the kids three reasons to take the S-Back test. One, if we're going to do it, do a good job at it, because if you're going to do anything, you might as well do a good job. That's just good character. Two, do it because of Riker. Riker is, I was talking to the 11th graders, Mr. Riker is their beloved English teacher. He takes great pride in their test scores. Do it because of Riker, and they all chuckled. And three, do it because we've tried to invest as little time as possible in pandering to the standards and to the assessment. So at least, if we, if we do well, and I don't even want to get caught up in the whole drama of comparisons and, you know, this school doing better than that school, but if we do well, I want to be able to say, we didn't pander to the test, and we didn't pander to the assessment. We're about good instruction all the time. And have test results changed that anywhere in the country? Look at, I mean, go through the facts in Vermont. How many schools that went into improvement stayed there? Well, of course, because of the whole AYP craziness, right? I mean, who would have invented that in their right mind? So we've got bad federal policy, and I know they've got us in a straitjacket fiscally, I know that, but, and I appreciate the resolution, but it's got to be stronger. It has got to be stronger. It needs to be fought on constitutional grounds, if nothing else. And the constitutional grounds are there.
So just, just to be clear, or at least from my mind, I don't differ with much that you've stated, but there's no direct control over this issue by, by this board, by the state of Vermont, by the Agency of Education. Do you agree with that?
No. I never want to give up some, some degree of control, some degree of choice, right? I just don't, I can't accept that as a human being.
I think we recognize we were held hostage, and I guess what we're encouraging is that the State Board of Education, our secretary, who has taken a very strong stand, I very much appreciate, you know, the AYP letter that came out, clearly, you understand it, you get it, that this doesn't work for Vermont, and it's bad policy, and it's counterproductive. We're at a point now that the return on investment is negative, in terms of time, in terms of focus, in terms of public perception, it is negative. For what we can glean from this data, it's not worth the negative side. Please, please, work with our congressional delegation, work with our governor, work with our, our legislature, work with our member organizations to support this kind of resolution and beyond, potentially, because I don't think this goes as far as it should. I understand it's a political process, I understand there's a reality, but I think we can go further in basically calling for the end of a system that is broken and has not worked, and give us more flexibility. And I know Bill has, you know, testified down in Washington, and Rebecca has testified, I know we have a strong voice. What we're here to do is to say, we support you as members of the field, we're willing to work and galvanize that support from other administrators that are out there, teachers, whomever, to support that this doesn't work, and we need the flexibility as a state, because we can get it right. I trust that we can get it right, even if it includes some form of standardized assessment. But the system we have now, based on the federal rules, does not work, and it needs to change. And I applaud you for taking a stand, saying, at least this year's results are not going to count. I think we should just say that. Every year, they're not going to count, all right? So I applaud you, you're taking a step in the right direction, we're here to say, take another step. Take another step beyond that. Keep taking steps, and we're there to support you, and we'll work on finding people to rally the cause and bolster you as a board and the Secretary of Education to move this forward.
Can I just quickly ask, when we got out of the waiver, remember we were in the waiver request, and then somebody decided not to do it, can somebody tell me who made that decision?
We-
Well, we, we all thought we understood the word waiver, and we thought what the word waiver meant was that there was an opportunity to assess students in some other way, other than the standardized test. Arne Duncan saw that very different, the Secretary of Education. And we worked with the governor, we worked with the secretary, and tried to get the waiver, but once we found out that waiver did not mean the same thing for them as it did for us, then, then we backed off.
We've been-
The state-
The state, the board and the agency, I think, as well.
And the governor all supported that decision.
And I would say from the field, that was the right decision. I mean, it was more onerous to get into the waiver, and, you know-
If we were under a waiver right now, we'd be evaluating all your teachers based on the test scores, and so at this point, I think what you're describing-
Oh, yeah, that's-
Yeah, yeah.
But you gave it some time to-
Oh, yes, yes. Yeah, and we were very supportive, and, and the agency did most of the work with the, with the agency, the Federal Agency of Education, but it, it just, it didn't go anyplace, because waiver didn't mean the same thing.
A couple of things on your first question of what good comes from these things in terms of improved education. Last month, a colleague at the University of Colorado and I put out a paper on the research results as to what effect the standardized testing movement has had on achievement, the answer is none. And what was amazing about that paper was within 10 days, 2,000 research professors across the nation endorsed it and took that into Washington to use this as part of their lobbying campaign. I would say it had an effect, but on the other hand, I'm not so sure it did. Sean Marie's going down to Washington next week as myself and the secretary, and we're going to continue this kind of discussion on the reauthorization. At this point, the reauthorization is, doesn't get rid of testing, there are some people who want to go to grade span testing as opposed to every year, but I don't know that we're going to win on that point. The politics are really kind of amazing. Here is all of the evidence, the setting over here, that says, this really doesn't work, you're misusing it, yes, there is a role for standardized testing, but you've got it wrong, but that doesn't seem to be influencing the secretary down there as much as we think it should. We'll see what happens from this. We do expect there will be a return of some power to the states, but what form that's going to take, I just don't know. And I think the best thing we can do now is to continue to make statements and, and say what it is. And John, you're right, is they do hold us hostage, it comes up to about $100 million, counting Title I special ed money, and that's a lot of money.
Rebecca.
I mean, I guess the one use I really do see, and I feel very strongly about, for some kind of standardized testing, whether it's grade span or whatever, we do need a standardized, reliable tool, which helps us track performance of different subgroups. I don't think this is useful data at the, at the school level, particularly Rivendell is so small, and I know you have population variations from year to year, so you're going to get volatility just associated with size. And the, the research that has been, come out since the advent of No Child Left Behind suggests that the test group size should be at least about 81 students, just to have any kind of reliable indicator. But what we do see at this state is aggregate trends, which to me suggests we should be very worried about students in poverty, and we should be very worried about kids with disabilities, because we do see statewide trends that suggest we're losing ground with those groups of students, and that is cause for concern, and how that helps us at the state level is set priorities for technical assistance and, you know, investments of resources to make sure that we're developing new professional capabilities around how to better serve those students. And I absolutely agree with you, it is about the students, and it's about what individual teachers do in the classroom with those individual students, and the way forward isn't more testing, the way forward is investing in developing our professional capital as a state. And the more we can free up resources for that purpose, I believe the more effective we will be at supporting those students. The challenge we have is that this money and all the money that supports the testing comes from the federal government, just as does the title money. And it's kind of like signing a contract, if you agree to take this money, one of the measures that the federal government requires you to take as a condition is this testing. So if you are saying you're not going to take the test, you are saying you won't take the federal dollars that support the test, but also support kids who are eligible for Title I, free and reduced lunch, all kinds of other things. So that's, that's it, they hold us hostage, not because they can compel us, they hold us hostage because we're not willing to give up that funding for our kids with disabilities and our kids who are living in poverty. And so then the challenge is, if we, if we do care about those federal investments in kids with disabilities and kids who are living in poverty, how can we manage these tools in a way that is as respectful as possible of the professionalism of our teachers, which is extraordinary? What I hear is teachers saying, I know that testing a child every year and telling them they are not proficient is very discouraging, and it runs against everything we know about grit and encouragement and fostering growth mindsets, so I'm going to minimize that. What we can do as professionals is say, hey, we're required by the federal government to do this, but let me tell you, and here are some other examples of work that you've done that's powerful and compelling and speaks to your growing proficiency. And so I want to just, I need to at least acknowledge the work that this board has done in shifting towards a proficiency-based model. I know the agency is working to develop performance assessments of proficiency, particularly transferable skills. We're working with teachers much as we did with the PLPs to get educators in the field, working with kids, to help us define and put together and prototype some sample tasks that we can use to capture evidence of growing skill, and that we can, that are really sort of educative assessments, and that they're done by teachers in classrooms with kids where you can really see that incremental progress. We need to do that work, and we need to figure out how to mitigate what we see as a negative consequences of federal policy while making maximal use of the resources and the state resources, which are, to be honest, very, very finite at this moment, to support as much as we can in terms of what we know is good practice. And what's powerful is when educators and principals and superintendents advocate for good instruction, advocate not for getting worked up about these tests, but really focusing on what matters, let's not make these tests more than they are, they are, and you know that they have, they have a purpose, but it's a finite purpose, let's put it in the box for its finite usefulness.
It's a very finite purpose, but I'm, I've, I've put these numbers together, the other piece I missed out, as our juniors are taking the S-Back, I have seniors and sophomores sitting in upper house elective classes with their juniors not there.
Well, and one, just, yeah, it just one-
It's impact, it's, in a small school, it's all over the place.
And it is more challenging, we are seeing that there are some unique challenges associated with very small sites where you can't pool expertise, so there are some unique challenges associated with the fact that, that we're very small, and this is something we're seeing in every conversation at the state level right now. What I can tell you is moving forward, I think the over-testing, you know, I hear, Bill just made an argument for grade span testing, I think we feel the over-testing argument is most acute in systems that are, are high schools, where the juniors are really over-tested. And as we move forward and more tests, we know that some of those tests that you mentioned, the SAT and ACT, are looking for ways to be approved as common core line tests. When we get to that point, we're open to exploring other options, this conversation isn't over. But, but some of the over-testing, to be blunt, in the state is because of local decisions. If you've implemented local assessment systems that require a lot of local testing over and beyond the smarter balance, that is going to take time out of valuable class, class instruction. I don't know that that's the issue in your system, but there are systems that have made that choice. And those are choices that we make, and they do have an impact on how much quality time kids spend hands-on, minds-on learning.
Rebecca, I appreciate your comments, and the one thing I just want to sort of piggyback on is that the testing is not going to mitigate the problems of poverty. And if we could reallocate time and reallocate the resources to quality after-school programs, quality summer programs, quality intervention, quality coaching, quality consulting teacher, quality co-teaching, we can think of a list that goes on and on about where we can find those resources. We need more money, and I know that's heresy in a climate of austerity, but we need more money to support children in poverty, there's no question. And the testing just denigrates our children, denigrates our schools, it forces teachers to have undue anxiety and stress, and my wife's a special educator, trying to figure out accommodations for kids that just are not going to be able to do the test, it's not going to help them. And we need to do something dramatically different. It's doing harm at this point. It's doing harm. And I just, I just want to make sure that people understand that, and I think you do, and I appreciate-
You do.
All your sentiment, I appreciate all your work as a board and the secretary, we're behind you. And I know you've dedicated a lot of time this morning to our-
Well, and we appreciate, we appreciate the two of you coming, and as you know, we're going to take up a resolution right after this. Normally, you made reference that it wasn't strong enough, normally what I would, would have suggested is, you know, is to get us some suggested amendments at the next meeting, but I think there's an urgency that we take action on this today, so-
Yeah, you go.
Go in the right direction.
Yeah.
Take a step today, and maybe take another step another day.
Yeah, it's not enough, but you're moving in the right direction. Sean, Sean Marie?
I really do appreciate you coming in, I think that I agree with Mr. Morris, that we, we definitely need to take action today. And I wanted to just ask a clarifying question, are you specifically talking about hours in your specific school when you were, Carrie, when you were talking about that?
Yes, well, in, in terms of staff hours, some of the staff included elementary folks.
Right, but this was just your-
Yeah, just Rivendell, yeah.
Thank you.
Question.
And just to echo what you're saying, I'm a teacher at South Burlington, and so I'm on the receiving end of this too, and it is unbelievable, and some of my colleagues that are trying to implement this, I was talking to one yesterday, she was up till midnight the night before. Got up at 3:00 that morning, and already started working, hadn't eaten, nervous, trying to get this thing, computers aren't working, trying to get systems working, and it's, it's a lot of stress, as you say, on the field, an extreme amount of stress, in a time that we're asking so much of our schools beyond just the S-Back. So I really truly understand. I even was trying to become S-Back certified as a teacher, to take the online test, and my computer couldn't get on, so I spent my whole prep period at the IT getting my computer so I could even log on, and so I haven't done it yet, so I have to do it today after the meeting, actually at home, go through the online tutorial, so then I can be certified to give the test. And that's my only training, is this online tutorial, which I've never given a test on a computer like that. I use online management systems where you give tests, and my students have never taken a test like that. We use an online management system that's very different, so I think there is a lot of stress from teachers and students, and I really thank you for coming and expressing that, like, even administrative level. Because I think every time we hear that, and I think as more people in the public hear that, I think it just makes it stronger. So I'd encourage you to even express, and inform the, your public, yeah.
Rebecca.
I'll be very quick too, and Frank, Frank, thanks for coming, and Frank came here to make sure he heard what you had to say, and we have a team internally in the agency that is going to work very hard on messaging about what we can and can't infer based on these tests. We just don't want to oversaturate by messaging too much, too much at once. So when we're at the point where we're beginning to talk about score reports, they're redesigning how they report the scores, and they will be communicating extensively with the field about, you know, the limits of this test tool. And we know that in the transition, we should assume a lot of volatility that's just associated with tech readiness, for example, we know that's an issue. And as we've said, we should not assume that willingness to go ahead and try to administer this means that all schools are equally prepared to do so. And so part of what we'll be picking up in the transition is a lot of volatility just about capacity to deliver, and so we'll be cautioning people from reading into the scores too much based on that. And if we can continuously advocate and communicate in ways that are sound and rational and, you know, competent, as you've been trying to do, then we hope that that will help our public and our, our communities know what to do with this and how not to use them.
You know, I'm, one last quick thing, and I'm sure you're doing it already, you know, we don't have a lot of authority, a lot of power to, to change this, it's, it's in Washington. So I would make sure you're spending a fair amount of time with our congressional delegation, making sure they understand this as well, you know, whether they're running for president or just running for reelection.
My sense of Senator Sanders would be all yours.
Thank you for giving us the time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Are there other members of the public who wish to be heard this morning? Not seeing any, we'll move on to item Z.
You can keep it.
Yes.
Oh, yours, yes, yes, yours, yes. Have you submitted this digitally? If you email it to me, I'll make sure.
Yeah, I mean, it's pretty, we're just talking.
Your choice. Your choice.
All the hours are there.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Item Z, Statement of Resolution. I'll turn it over to Bill.
And I'll turn it over to Krista.
Bye. Thank you. So this came about a weekend of work, of between the three of us. So I think it was a late Friday night. But really thinking about looking at what California did and suspending scores for a year, and thinking, well, it just seems like common sense. Like Rebecca was saying, this is a year of volatility. This is we're implementing this test, as I talked about in the field. Things were absolutely crazy. I mean, people do not, I mean, just try to figure out how to administer the test, getting computers, their tech ready. Some schools, it's the tech person running the test. Some people, it's actually educators. It's really difficult to try to implement. And this is also, Rebecca, the practice test wasn't even out until the beginning of February because of some glitches, so.
Well, actually, I mean, Frank can speak to. I think the other hope was that people would not spend too much time practicing, since there is a degree to which you want to practice enough to be familiar, but excessive practice is actually taking away time from classroom instruction.
Oh, yeah.
So that it wasn't intended to be out a huge amount of time ahead, anyway.
It was just that people didn't know what the test was. So the first year, I think there was even more anxiety, so they could try it to see if it works. And I know in my school, they even tried going in the other day, and then half the kids could get in, half couldn't, so they had to troubleshoot. So just trying to figure it out. And there's a lot going on here. And really, when I was sitting down to write this, and really thinking about how much we've asked the field to change in four years. I mean, I feel it, but when you started putting it down and you're looking, you're like, all right, these standards were adopted in the fall of 2010, so Common Core standards, and then that was just the fall. So everything really for schooling had already been set into place. And I know from being in the field that year, the agency started putting on trainings about Common Core, but that was sort of like, okay, here's this thing coming. And that was just 2010 in the fall. And now we're here in the spring 2015 and trying to give these tests that are supposed to be Common Core standards from K through 12, and we're testing kids now. And so it's kids that have not even been falling under these standards for their entire educational career. We're expecting, say, junior year, that they have all these skills. But we haven't asked teachers to even teach those skills up until 2010. And then besides that, we've had lots of other initiatives come through. We accepted Next Generation Science Standards, so I was involved when we did that. And so that changes again curriculum. Again, that time piece of going through and trying to make all these changes. Act 77, personal learning plans, we've changed graduation requirements to proficiency-based, which is still trying to be absorbed. And, I mean, it's just so much going on. And so when we saw California sort of set this lead, it seemed like an appropriate way to follow. Because really, how can we take scores that were kneecaps last year and try to compare scores this year with the S-Back in a brand-new test? So that's where we started then going through, really thinking about what is the climate of Vermont, and like, how much we've asked for change, and then going through and looking at what are some of these concerns that we have, and then what would we like to resolve and to follow that lead and suspend the scores for a year. And then in addition, call on, in the resolved section, it goes, just reiterates that we've already made a statement about standardized tests. And I think this really backs up, Rebecca, what you were saying earlier, that we've already taken a stand on what the appropriate uses are, and to remind people of that document that we've already made through. And this really does not seem like a proper way to rank schools, like, does not fit our philosophy that we already adopted. That we really, this, as these gentlemen were saying earlier, really does harm when we start labeling schools based on this test, and that we need to hold off on that and give the time, the field time to catch up. And just the volatility of the test taking itself with the new, I mean, it's a computerized test. Everything is online. So if I have to give the test, I have to give it online. The kids have to be there. It's very different from what's happened before. Standardized tests before were just pencil and paper. You hand them out, you read a script to go through. But now this is a technology, and students aren't used to it, and the teachers aren't. And just to honor the fact that this is a huge change, and to have people then ranked based on that change just doesn't feel right. You know, it doesn't seem like common sense. So to sort of take a break and really go back, the last resolve was the same resolve that we had from our last position paper when it comes to standardized tests. But I think it again, it's like, as Bill was saying, it's saying it again. This is really what we think this needs to change. And maybe with this document, I mean, we could try to push a little bit further and just-
So with that great introduction, I assume you're moving the adoption of the resolution?
Yes.
Is there a second to that motion?
Second.
Second by Mark. Further discussion?
Can I just quickly ask, do we know how many schools are going to be administering this on paper?
None.
None have decided. None. They're all going to go ahead.
They're all going ahead.
It does not mean it will be easy in all places.
And I just want, on a personal note, I have a daughter in Whitingham that whose parents have kept her purposely away from digital devices. She's going to go into that test tremendously handicapped, and I think that's an issue.
That will be part of our communication.
I think that's huge. My colleagues, with an N of one in each state of Connecticut and New Hampshire, who are already doing this application, they're running into all kinds of technical complexities. And you're right, the students who have not had the same access to computers as compared with those whom it's going to be natural, it's going to be a big difference. And we won't know whether that's because they know more or whether it's just computer access. And my biggest thing is the validation, and these are supposed to measure whether we're college and career ready, but they haven't been validated. We don't know that this, they measure the attribute they're claiming they're measuring.
Yes, Stacy.
I just had two quick thoughts. One, although I certainly understand the complexities of the learning how to take it on the computer, I don't, I want to make sure we spend as little time possible talking about the schools' need to catch up, because I think that kind of weakens the message that somehow the schools aren't ready or are behind or whatever. And just really focus on whether these tests are meaningful, do they improve instruction, do they show what we know, can we minimize their impact? I think, just want to emphasize that. So while, of course, teachers haven't had that time, I think for fear that somehow it gets blamed on, oh, the schools haven't done enough, or the teachers haven't done enough. I just, I don't want us to go there. The other thing I just think we should keep in mind, not only do we have the issues of students who aren't, haven't had the technology access, but thinking about just the impacts. We have schools that don't have designated, my daughter's in a school where there's not a designated testing room. So what that means is for all the standardized testing days, the library is now closed. So for every other student, there's no access to books, there's no access to the, those are the spaces where kids get all their supported reading time, math time are in those facilities. So the ripples of effects are really quite significant.
I mean, I agree. The test itself, I mean, Rebecca, is it 14 hours or 16 hours of actual testing?
Eight.
Is it eight? But is that for English? It's only eight? Okay.
There's an instructional, a performance task, which is an instructional-
That's actually less than the kneecap.
It is actually less than the kneecap.
So it doesn't, again, it's not 16.
Okay.
And I hear that there's been, yeah, and we should talk about, I mean, there's a lot of opposition to the online format. There are some real benefits and promises associated with the online format, and I hope we don't lose track of that. We are in transition. Transitions are hard. We don't fully know how this technology will play out. We do know that the kneecap, the paper and pencil version, had some substantial drawbacks that really limited its utility. This will be more useful if it's done well. It also does have accommodations, and we won't have kids taking the test and being unable to answer a single question. Hopefully, there'll be very few of them. There will be some. And we won't have other kids, or as many kids, who take the test and think the whole thing is so easy, because it's differentiated. It's an individualized test, so that we will have a better read of where kids are and what specific skill clusters they see in the study. So it's not that it's perfect. We don't know that that's truly how it will play out. That's the promise of it. And what we're doing is piloting it. And there were glitches, I know, going into the, Frank, you should speak to this, but going into the beta test version, the pilot version last year, we heard all of these comments. And what was the reaction after they'd gone through the pilot? Is it okay if he comes up?
Yeah. I think we're ready to vote on this.
I'll be very quick.
Thank you.
Frank Gertiman, Agency of Education. After the test, people found, really, the comments were far and away very positive. They found the experience much more productive than the paper pencil test. The students actually found the experience more engaging than the paper pencil test. And I think the secretary's comments that we really are piloting, really is figuring, how do we use this new tool in a way that has meaning in the context of Vermont, in Vermont education?
So the challenge is not to use it to beat schools and teachers up as we're just piloting.
Right. The two gentlemen that started this conversation, or in public to be heard, made reference to students' attitude in approaching this. And I remember hearing from a distinguished former student representative on this board, who was a pretty good student, saying, "Yeah, it didn't matter. I mean, it has no effect on, you know, what I do, where I go, or anything." So, you know, he and his friends entered the test, you know, and saying it wasn't important to them on an individual basis.
I agree with that.
I'm saying it for you.
I think the thing that I heard you say, Rebecca, which I'm not sure has been heard in the field as clearly as I heard it today, is that it really is a pilot. And so I think, and where it's gotten lost is the idea that there was going to be some accountability associated with it for next year. I've gone into it with the assumption that, of course, there wouldn't be an accountability, and it wouldn't matter if there was. So, but I think that's a really important piece that I'm not sure everybody's heard, that this really is, we understand that it's a transition because we're doing it, but we didn't, I don't think there was a clear understanding that the Board of Ed was, or the AOE was seeing it as that. And so certainly, this helps, and I was very excited to get this.
Yes. This helps. And this will be the basis of subsequent, and I know Frank's team's already begun conversations with US Ed to think about how this, what are the changes that we'd make to our federal workbook, how will we move forward based on this resolution?
Absolutely.
So that is the basis, moving forward. I need to point out that with every, basically, school in the state of Vermont, low performing, the additional sanction is that we label everybody low performing. We're already low performing.
Yeah.
You know, where do you go when you're all in detention? You know, so we're already there.
Yeah. Just don't suspend it.
All right. Couple more comments, and we'll pick a vote.
Just very quickly, just coming from, and I know some people are watching this, maybe don't have the full in front of them, but the one I think that really speaks to this is resolved.
I said you wouldn't let her read the three pages.
No. The Vermont State Board of Education finds it inappropriate to use a result of this assessment, a pilot test, for any form of accountability that could misidentify and/or mislabel schools and divert attention from the more comprehensive Vermont Education Quality Review, and any findings that may come out of that review. And it continues on. So, I mean, I think we really are trying to make this statement, and I hope the message does get out, because I agree that sometimes when we talk here and even when we put these out, it doesn't trickle down. And I know just talking to some colleagues yesterday and showing them this, they actually, like, their stress levels had went down, because they're like, oh, okay, this isn't going to, like, they are so invested because they want their kids to do well, they want their school to show like it's doing well. And it really does cause a lot of anxiety because they want the best. And to show them that this isn't going to count, that if things don't go right and the technology doesn't work, the school isn't going to be labeled as failing. I mean, that's anxiety.
Well, your school's already labeled as failing. It doesn't change who we are.
Right, right. And that's what, and I think just hearing it from this board is actually really helpful for the field.
Krista, schools in denial still.
Wait a minute.
They are in denial.
Wait a minute. We're at a meeting here, and you should be recognized before you speak. This is instead of a conversation. Are we ready for the vote on this? If so, all those in favor of supporting this resolution, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say no. The ayes have it. It's a unanimous vote of the Vermont State Board of Education to support this resolution.
Can I ask a question, Rebecca?
Sure. We usually do press conferences afterwards, but-
Well, I'm Howard Wyssman from the Reformer. What is going to be used for a YP next year?
That's what we'll follow up with US Ed to determine. We can report back to you at the next meeting.
And does the US DOE have to approve whatever the state does enough using?
We, well, do you want to speak about, I sort of feel like we should, what we should do is come back to you at the next meeting and update you on the conversations that we've had with US DOE in response to this resolution, if that's okay.
Thank you, sure.
And maybe what you could do, well, when we take a break, is talk to folks from the agency. Yes?
I would just like to encourage board members to share this with their local boards, their principals, their people they know in the field. With the last one, I tried to get to the boards locally and make sure that people saw it, emailed it with a personal note, because I think it really helps to communicate that this is the stand that we took.
And I think whatever the agency can do to distribute this, or put it on the website, or whatever you can do to increase publicity, we would encourage that. Yes?
In that respect, I actually would like to make a motion. I would like to make a motion that the chair or a chair designee takes this statement and put it, use this to write a letter to the editor on behalf of the State Board of Education that goes over this. So kind of put it in everyday speech.
All right. The motion has been made that the chair of the State Board of Education or his designee circulate a editorial or, what's the other?
A letter to the editor based on the statement.
My turn.
Yeah. Is there a second to the motion?
Second.
It's been seconded. Any discussion?
Yes.
Who seconded it?
Me.
Sean Murray. Sean Murray.
My question is, you may get some questions as a result of this. Is this committee or whoever's doing this going to be responsible for fielding those?
Oh, more power to the conversation.
And just one of the other things that we've talked about is that we don't communicate enough. And I feel like just sending this out as an email, this is a very, I mean, with the, it's a very official document, the whereas, resolved, but really taking this down and breaking it down into a letter to the editor on behalf of the State Board, and sending it to all the papers in the state of Vermont, and really starting to communicate our ideas, because people don't, like, probably you're right, people don't hear enough, because like, what we actually do and the stances that we take. And I just think that this would be a way of communicating more with the public, which is part of our-
Here.
Just to follow up, I mean, the punchline at the very end is this is going to the feds. This is not an internal document for Vermont. This is going to the feds. But it's going to, there are going to be ongoing issues or questions about this, especially if we go public. And I do think we should be prepared to respond.
We are public.
Well, I know that, but now we're heading this document forth, and that's going to invite-
But we've already adopted it. And this is a document that we stand by. We unanimously adopted the document. So I would think in the principles, we should communicate with the state of Vermont how, what we're adopting and our stances.
All right. The motion is that the chair of the State Board of Education write an op-ed piece to be circulated in all Vermont areas of media. And it's been moved and seconded. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say no. The ayes have it unanimously. So, someone write that letter for me, and I will get it circulated.
Excellent. There you go. I think you did a good job there, Stephen.
Okay.
You did a great job there.
Moving on to the consent agenda. And we don't have a consent agenda, so I'll take a little time. And it's with my urging that Perry sends out the board packets with his little note from his desk. However, I did not know that he was going to take me on in the first paragraph of this one, and lumps me in with Robins and geese.
I love the letter.
I do, too. It's very personal.
No, I encourage him. But Perry's been busy with many other things, and we'll have the February minutes at the April meeting. On to item D. Every two years, this board elects a chair and vice chairman. I would, what I would propose we do this morning is we elect the vice chair first, and then whoever that officer is will run the meeting for the election of the chairman. So are there nominees for vice chairman of the State Board of Education? Krista?
I nominate Sean Murray.
Is there a second to that?
Second.
It's been seconded by Stacy. Any other nominees? If not, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say no.
Are you currently the vice chair?
Well, I was half a vice chair.
She was co-vice chair.
A lot of them's gone.
Yeah, really?
So the motion has been passed, and Sean Murray is vice chairman for the next two years, and I will turn the meeting over to her.
Thank you, and thanks for your support. I open nominations for the chair of the State Board. Stacy?
I'd like to nominate Stephen, and I'm going to actually say a few reasons why. I think Stephen should serve again as board chair. He seeks consensus while allowing for a variety of points of view. He runs respectful, organized, and timely meetings, which I think have been sat in a variety of other board meetings. It's not always the case. It really helps us move along, and you do so with nice flexibility and sense of humor, at times self-deprecating sense of humor, which we all appreciate. So I nominate Stephen to serve again as board chair.
I'll second that.
Can I also say something? I think Stephen has played a pivotal role in the legislature from my perspective. I mean, that was really needed, and his presence has made a big difference. So for that reason, I more endorse it.
So Stephen, do you have two years left?
I think-
I don't know where we are. I don't really-
I think I have just two years left, yeah. Unless we change the law and allow for a second term.
Well, then. You can work on that.
Sorry.
I would second that. All in favor of Stephen as chair- All in favor of Stephen as chair?
Aye.
It's unanimous.
Thank you, and thanks for your nice comments, Stacy. We'll move on to board announcements. Any board members have announcements they'd like to make?
Yeah. Attended American Association for Education Finance and Policy Meeting, and a paper I haven't got, but it was good to hear it, is Economic Policy Institute was looking at all of the states and their achievement, and you've heard this remark that Vermont is doing good because its student composition is positive. Well, what they did was they took into consideration all the demographic factors, and the conclusion was that Vermont is high achieving, and it's also improving, and it's more than just the demographic thing. So that was very encouraging to hear. When I get that paper, I will be sure and share it with all of you. And another paper I had mentioned, which is relevant to Vermont, is A New Version of Money and Whether It Matters in Education or Not, and this is by Jesse Rothstein at Berkeley, and the conclusion there is, yes, money does matter, and when we hear the concerns about the high expenditures that we do have, they do pay off.
Yes.
What was the measure in the first study that were high achieving? Is it test scores?
Yes.
Just have to observe.
Stacy?
I attended two different days at the legislature this past month, the early childhood day at the legislature, and the afternoon and expanded learning day at the legislature. They were really exciting days, there were hundreds of attendees from all across the field, providers, parents, educators, policymakers. We met with legislators at lunchtime, the governor came and spoke, and I was really encouraged to see what seems to be a somewhat unique alignment from our president, our governor, Rebecca, all the administrators, really looking at different proactive attention on supporting our most vulnerable students, whether students who are born into poverty or students with disabilities, both coming from the early childhood side in terms of looking at that birth to three, and what kids all need to really arrive ready for learning in kindergarten, not ready, like, memorizing their flashcards, but ready to learn, knowing how to navigate the classroom, knowing how to regulate themselves socially and emotionally. There's a lot of alignment on that. And then also the opportunity for afternoon and expanded learning opportunities, and what that can do. The most amazing statistic that I heard was, and I'm almost forgetting the number, I wish I had it written for me, I think that a Johns Hopkins study was done, and it said, and maybe Rebecca, you'll get the right number, that of the gap that we see in achievement up in ninth grade when you measure it, is it 80? Was it 80%?
Yes, it's never two-thirds.
Yeah, 80% of that achievement gap can be attributed to the differences in summer and extended learning opportunities, and I thought that was fairly remarkable, and that it costs in this state about $2,600 a student to provide quality afternoon and summer programs. And to me, what seemed really amazing about that is $2,600, and like we said, you know, money, the money obviously is a tight year, as it always is, but that's not that much money, $2,600, right? So I thought what was exciting was, I think that's something the state of Vermont could get their arms around, providing these kinds of experiences for students. There's a lot of energy and effort behind it, there's a lot of legislative support that I've heard for some of these projects, so, I don't know, I was excited to be a part of both of those days. So I did it.
Krista?
I met with Vermont Public Television Chuck Pizer, and talking about the role of Vermont Public Television, and the role they'd like to sort of partner with schools in education, and thinking about, he has access to all the videos that they show on PBS, and then taking those videos to schools and having panel discussions. So that already happens in about 18 schools in the state, but he'd really like to see that multiply, because he can provide these videos, and then he does all the legwork of going around and creating panels of people around the state, and bringing people from outside the school. So just a resource that, it was very interesting to sit down with him. One of the things that did come up also, though, is that Vermont Public Television is set to, they're on the chopping block for budget cuts, along with a lot of other organizations that, Stacy, you were just talking about, providing those services. Vermont Governor's Institute is also in the chopping block, and they get about 30% of their funding from the state, and that Vermont Governor's Institute has learning weekends and summer opportunities, and what they do is any child that wants to go can go to those camps. I had one student last year, because I do work for the Governor's Institute on Asian Cultures, that could not afford it. The whole tuition was paid, and their gas money to get there. So it's really, it's open for all students, so that's something that's on the chopping block. And then last month, I had mentioned that I met with the commissioner on education from the Vermont Commission on Women, and that's actually set, the whole commission is set to be cut from, so get rid of the commission of women in Vermont. So just to follow up on that, so they do want to partner with us. Yeah, they want to partner with us, but they might not exist. So that's things that are coming up. And then I also went to the House, and went to various ed committee meetings during my vacation week, because that's what teachers do on vacation, be a legislator for fun, going south to Montpelier, that was south for me. But it was, it was very interesting, I'm sure it will come up when we talk about the legislative update, but it was very disconcerting, because the, talking about money, they were just throwing out cuts left and right, and it was two days before the bill was voted out, and there was all sorts of different ideas on the table, and I know we're going to talk about this more later, but I left really frustrated, and very hard, because I think, you know, there is this appetite for cut, 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 but at what cost, and that a lot of these things that we're saying are going to be helpful are the things that are getting cut. So just, I'm a little worried, but I'm sure we're going to talk about that legislative update.
Peter?
In regards to SPEC, and it's a new acronym for NECALE-B, and the Congress in action on that front, but I've been listening and reading of how other states are kind of coalescing to be able to address these issues, and I don't know if that's been, we're doing that, you know, trying to work with other states on this front.
Terms of ESEA reauthorization.
Yes, and the SPEC, the SPEC particularly, I mean, and you talked about California, but other rural states are really concerned about this, and I'm just wondering, has there been...
Unless it's come up at your meetings in Washington, we have not reached out.
We were quite actively with other states, especially California.
Okay.
Any other comments from board members? If not, we'll move on. I don't have a particular report, so we'll go to the legislative update.
So Jill Remick from the Agency of Education, nice to see you all. So this week, of course, there's a lot happening in the State House. Friday was crossover for a lot of the bills, and then by the end of this week, they're really hoping to have the majority of the House bills make their way through.
Last Friday was crossover, or this Friday?
Well, this Friday is crossover, but a lot of them were hoping to have things out last Friday that have to go to other committees by this coming Friday.
Can someone lock that? Someone's locked it.
I don't think it's locked, you have to just push.
Okay.
So for example, H361, which I think will probably be the focus of most of our conversation today, is being discussed in three different committees today and tomorrow. House Education, House Ways and Means, and Senate Education.
Would you update us on what's happening in House Education, in that they've already taken a vote, and I'm not clear anyway, and what they're doing on a bill that they've already made a decision on?
Right. I've been trying to track that down as well. They've been asked to revisit some of the sections in the bill, so I think that they would then be presented as amendments that would be given to Ways and Means.
There's another version coming out this afternoon, is my understanding.
From the House?
Yes, House Ed.
The House Ed?
So last week...
That's a little out of process. Would you agree, Peter?
But not, it's not unheard of, no, I understand.
So last week, both those committees were spending a good deal of time on the taxation sections of H361, the property tax cap, I mean, the spending cap, and this week, they're still honing in on the section regarding the governance, I think it's section 17. And also, like I said, Senate Education is starting to take testimony this week on 361. They'll actually be formally confirming Rebecca on Thursday afternoon, and I'm sure they'll be asking her about that as well.
You won't object?
And so I roped Vaughn into joining me, because they continue to change the specifics that are in section 17 regarding governance. I mean, the basic premise is that they would be trying to get all Vermont districts and supervisory unions to become part of an integrated education system pre-K to 12. Once you get through there, the details of the how and the why continue to be worked on. And also, the Senate Education Committee has their own version of doing a similar change that will likely be taken up when it gets officially over to the Senate side. The, both of the versions still do have some of the governor's proposals regarding phasing out of the small schools grant, except for in the need of geographic necessity, and some change to the 3.5% hold harmless provision, the per pupil for declining enrollment to protected declining enrollment. So those are still very much a part of both the House and the Senate versions, and it does seem that those are making their way through. Another piece that's being discussed in both House and Senate Ed this week is related to collective bargaining. There are several bills that address no-strike, no-imposition language, so those are, like I said, being discussed in various committees, and what will come out of that is yet to be determined, which is really not our purview. It was certainly one of the things that the governor had mentioned in his proposal, but we've really tried to take the stance that, you know, we're focused on the education aspect, we're not a labor organization, so it's not really appropriate for us to necessarily weigh in. And I did want to just add, you folks might remember, I feel like this is a déjà vu, but for the last several years, we've had the pieces for our miscellaneous technical corrections that have been making their way through. Last year, we even got those pieces through both the House and the Senate, but just the timing of it worked out that they hadn't happened. So specifically, this is sections that will revise the section in Title 16 related to the education quality standards. Right now, in Title 16, 165, it still says school quality standards, and it has a lot of outdated language. So we had worked with you folks and worked through the last two years of the previous House Education Committee and Senate Education Committee to get Title 16 to be more reflective of what you folks have passed for education quality standards. So that does seem like it's, it's now officially been moved on, it's in Ways and Means, and we're hoping that that's pretty straightforward this year. It doesn't seem to be the magnet for a lot of other bills like it was last year. And then, of course, just as an aside, the, you folks, I'm sure, are aware that the budgets for operating state government are also very much being bandied about last week and this week, and so that certainly has an impact on our agency and how our agency operates. I leave that to Rebecca, if she wants to get into the specifics, but certainly that's something that took a lot of our attention last week. Vaughn, do you want to briefly try to explain better than I?
One thing, I want to raise a question that obviously will come up through the whole discussion on 361, and particularly section 17, and even though I spent some time in the legislature, you've got both the House and the Senate Ed Committees working on a bill, and the bill's got, obviously, to go through the money committees. Strategically, I'm wondering where it's best, when this board comes in with its suggestions, and where we can be most helpful. Is it now, during the whole process, or is it at some stage later on? But I think that's an important question that we need to have some sense of before we leave here today.
Well, I certainly, I understand you folks, I know, I think Mr. Mathis will be testifying on Wednesday in Senate Education.
He won't be alone.
Okay. I think that's a reasonable approach.
He always has this smiling guy next to him. He keeps him in line.
You know, we really feel like there's a lot of, there's a lot of information that we can provide to Senate Education that they're interested in, that could really help formulate the conversation. I think they're amenable to suggestions and information from you folks, so based on the time crunch and the fact that they're already taking up this week, that seems like a reasonable place to go.
Yes, Rebecca?
And I think that, Bill will bring this up, one thing I would be mindful of, it, the bills, it's not clear what's going to happen yet, but most of what's on the table involves additional new duties for this board, and I think what I would encourage you to think through is in order, you know, you can pass a law, the real test is in the implementation, and if you need to do that, I think you should really think through what support you need to do that.
We'll get into that, yes.
On up. Briefly, we received a new draft of section 17 this morning. I've only been able to read it once more quickly than I'd like, so...
I'm not sure it's fully public yet.
Okay.
MIDI doesn't have it yet.
No, it's not out yet.
But...
We've got good sources.
I think the best illustration of integrated education systems is, I think we had six people in the secretary's office, and seven interpretations of what they actually were. Clearly, the problem that the legislature struggled with for years is they would like districts to do something voluntarily, to form themselves into larger units responsible for K-12, that at least some of the districts very strongly don't want to do. And the version, the most recent public version, seems to take a course where they'll be given time to do that, and where they will come to the State Board with reports. The State Board will be expected to evaluate the reports and look to see whether or not a group of districts has gathered together and excluded someone, they can tell them to go back and take another look, those sorts of things. At the end of this voluntary stage, they appear to be moving in a direction where the secretary would recommend a plan to the State Board that would incorporate the districts that had not yet formed into larger units, and there are a series of criteria that the secretary should use. For example, districts shouldn't be integrated into anything where they would have to change the grades of their tuition, those kinds of things. So basically, other than you might want to add a request for a combat adjustment to your per diems, I think that's the general, the difficult decisions, it seems to me, with respect to the legislature, because I've seen how hard it is, eventually wind up here.
Vaughn, it sounds like H83 again, but can you, what's the timeline for the, for somebody, as I've been saying, pulling the trigger on the consolidation issue? When must it be done, in this current?
I think it's...
2019?
Yeah. There's still some...
Plan is November 17.
What's that?
November of 2017 is their plans have to be in front of us, and it has to be completed by 2019.
The voluntary base.
I'm talking about when, for those outliers that have resisted, 19?
I think it's 19.
I thought they were trying not to call it consolidation.
Yeah, it's governance.
Yeah.
It's not consolidation anymore.
Well, we call it what it is.
Well, it's an interesting, I don't even need to say, that's what I'm going to, because I started, I guess, it's an interesting Vermont public policy issue. I mean, it's, everyone cares about the quality of the education of their children, but they also care about the culture and the quality of the community, local control. And this whole issue, in my mind, is more about the community and local control than it is about education. And I don't, you know, I don't know how we get, and I understand, fully understand, that if you're a legislator and you're, you need to run for reelection every two years, that this is a very difficult issue to take on in some areas. But from a, there's just no question from a quality education that there, we need, this "we," meaning the state, needs to do something on this issue, on school governance. Schools with 20 kids are not getting the same education as kids with, you know, 200, 300 kids in them, or even, you know?
There is one thing that's changing a bit, and I don't know, my guess is at some point, it's going to pressure the legislature to act increasingly. There are districts that are being faced with the choice of consolidating, which they're now willing to do, merging with somebody, or flat-out closing even their elementary schools, and are struggling to find partners. So is possible you're going to see a growing number of cases where, if the legislature does nothing, rather than preserve local control, you're going to have a small district with no school. And I think that might, it certainly is changing the perspective of some school boards. And if I can pass on one quick piece of good news, Bolton and Underhill ID have both publicly talked about the role of the modified... talked about the role of the modified unified union district in putting them on firmer ground. So the idea that consolidation of districts has to mean the death of, of small schools, the initial returns at least, are the exact opposite.
All right. Bill, let's, can I go to Bill's?
I just have a quick question for you, actually. So one of the things, I mean, looking at our strategic plan too and sustainability, is it something that we could talk about in the future and just put on a topic of local control and just discuss local control and invite people? I know, just I felt at town meeting, even my local control, my school board, no one wanted to run. Two people finally said, I'll do it. And then, so we had two people, and then we had two people run for our, our union seat. And one had served 20 years. I talked to them. They didn't even know about EQS and they'd been on the board for 20 years. I mean, it was just, it was disheartening. So as somebody that, I don't feel like I have local control over my school because people are barely running. And so could we put that on the agenda in the future?
We can do that, yes. And that situation happened last year in my hometown, that there were, I think, two vacancies that no one ran. And they were so desperate that someone actually called me and said if I had any interest.
Town next to me, two people, they're down too.
Can I just say, in regards to that, I think part of that conversation should look at union boards and how they operate relative to what we think is, in this limited context, what, what local boards are.
Right. So Bill, your legislative committee has been active. You and I are scheduled to appear before the Senate Education Committee tomorrow.
Right.
What would, what would you like from the full board today before your presentation tomorrow?
I would like to understand what the new Section 17 is saying. Because the thing that I had sent out to you in terms of testimony.
I believe this, for members of the public, I believe this is available on the table?
I did, but I can't.
And of course.
If it isn't, we ought to make sure it is available.
By the time you get it, it will be outdated anyway.
A draft of the Legislative Committee.
Statement on H361.
Yesterday, 3:00 PM.
I guess I have it.
Let's take a short break and get copies of this for people. Very generally, just to kind of set the stage, when Bill and I have testified earlier this winter before both House and Senate Ed Committees, we've expressed the real need for change in governance. And we've also expressed to the both committees that, that this board knows it has a very serious role in whatever that is, and we're committed and ready to take that on. And I think that's been somewhat effective that they, they understand that. And I've gone on to say, however, give us as many parameters, criteria, and direction as you possibly can. Obviously, that's a struggle when you've got people coming at it from very different points of view. But there, I think they're clear that the State Board of Education, under existing law in some cases, but under probably more importantly, new law that will set those parameters and those criteria are very important to us and we're ready and eager to get going. So with that great introduction, Bill.
Okay. Of course, with Section 17, which is the critical section of the entire thing up for some revision, what I may be thinking at this hour on Tuesday may be different between, different from what I'm going to be talking about tomorrow at 3:00. There's a lot of things in here and I'd like to get your input as a board before we go in there and start saying things on these issues. We had a good committee meeting by teleconference last Friday. I felt like we had pretty strong consensus on what we had to say, but there's a difference between a general conversation and looking at something that's written on paper. It comes out quite differently and it has gone through several revisions since then. One of the things in the preamble is we understand that they are very hard-pressed to put something together to get, make crossover, get it to the Senate, go through different committees and so forth. And so there is the impression of a great number of ideas were just thrown out there into one kind of bill without any really thought given to making this an integrated system that works together with all the pieces. In fact, some of the pieces tend to contradict each other. But they were getting it on the table and hoping to straighten out these things in the greater process. The trouble with that in a legislative arena is that sometimes things don't get taken care of and sometimes things stick to the wall that you didn't want to stick to the wall. And what we're encouraging is a more careful and deliberative approach. They're raising the right issues, they're being very comprehensive about raising the right issues, but does this represent something that's workable? And that's the main thing that we have there and we're really, there are a lot of people who are pushing and saying there's a great crisis. Yes, there is problems. We do need to attend to those problems in a very serious kind of way, but don't be so hasty that you make decisions based on doing something because you're being pressured. Think about it some. Support capacity, and some of you said that perhaps we shouldn't raise support capacity as the very first bullet on the middle of second page. And others of you have had the opposite point of view, and I think this is very important. Since there is a provision in the law that would be unfunded, that there will be no unfunded mandates, does this bill actually outlaw itself? Because it has huge costs and we're not allowed to expend you money, so therefore the entire bill invalidates itself. That's tongue-in-cheek for those of you in the television audience there.
Or who don't know you.
The thing is, is unless there is some capacity in the agency and in the board itself, this thing is not going to work. It is very labor-intensive in what it was doing. And what I did in the middle there, and some people said we shouldn't go into detail, but I think people need to know this detail of the kinds of things that are going to be asked of the agency and the board. And it's a very tremendous lot of issues that need to be addressed. And we're doing this at the same time that the governor has announced a reduction of 325 positions. There's $100 million-plus hole in the budget, and this is a problem. And the worst thing we could do is set ourselves up for a few years, two years down the pike when all these plans come in, and we're being asked to do them. Locals are being asked to put money into this and there not be any capacity. Any questions on that?
Yeah. On the funding issue, I mean, I certainly agree that the agency's understaffed and the board is understaffed and will need staffing if it takes on all these additional responsibilities. My question is, does that, does the funding issue need to be addressed this year? Will we be, how much of this work will, will start after July 1st? Or with the dates in 17 and 19, is there another, another legislative session that we could address the funding and positions issue?
I would.
And I only raise that because I hate to go to these committees and be negative and.
Well, I think we have to be negative, and that's not being negative, it's just telling the truth.
I like that.
It's, it's got to be there, and I think some capacity would have to be built up over, actually, two years out is when it really hits. But the local districts, and Vaughn, you can jump in on this one too, is I think we have to have immediate capacity out there to help districts make these kinds of plans. And that's going to take a lot of tender, loving care and a lot of visitations from a qualified team of three or four people. And so I think they're going to have to be funded right out of the gate. And I'm apprehensive about saying to the legislature, send us the bill later, or send us the check later. Things like that, sometimes the check doesn't get written.
In turn, since I was invited to jump in, my sense is the board, if things are going to go according to House Education's plan, will very rapidly be seeing more of the kinds of reports that you've been seeing, except that the factors you are directed to take into account expand. And you're supposed to be evaluating whether or not districts were left out that should have been included. You're supposed to recommend that the agency work with them to see if others can be incorporated. So not only will the work in the field and the work in the agency increase, I don't, I can't imagine you going a busy year in the agency without, in the board, I'm sorry, without more assistance. But it will be a hectic year and it will constrain the kinds of questions you can really ask. That may be okay.
Yep. Other responses to Bill's question.
Okay, the next exciting issue is the contradictory change mechanism. I was having this conversation with an unnamed individual who's in this room and who was saying the bill is too permissive, but it looks very authoritarian. And I'm saying perhaps it is too authoritarian while pretending to look permissive. And this gets to your point of we have seven different opinions from six people on what the bill means in terms of a mechanism. Is you've got two years of local roll-your-own in any kind of combination that you want. That's what it says.
Yeah. It's the. To deliberate.
Roll your own.
Get multiple pieces of testimony in the same bill since we're considering marijuana legislation.
Well, this can, this can all work together.
But the state board is going to impose a coherency on all that and have them do it again if it doesn't like it.
Right. Yeah. And furthermore, if you have a vote and the state board doesn't like it, the state board can set aside your vote. This can be a problem.
Yes.
And I can appreciate the philosophy of respecting local control and the hammer drops sometime, and in fact, under existing law, that could happen now. But to send out two kinds of contradictory messages, that's what we are doing, I think is very troublesome. I think we can get great buy-in on a permissive approach, and I think that there has been the past several years of building up capacity to do this. But then, when you drop the hammer at the end, you do have problems and it's going to be a very large political problem, which will hit the legislature immediately, but will hit it later whenever we start making unpopular decisions. Comments on that? Do, what do people think about that?
Stacy?
In a very simplistic way, it reminded me of saying to my daughter when she was three, like, you can clean up now or you can clean up in one minute, like giving her that sense of, you know, you have choice. You could do it now, or we could do it, you know, one minute from now. I kind of like that balance. I understand why it's contradictory, but I feel like from what I've heard from the Reds and the Muds, there has been some movement, and I think we should credit those communities for taking the initiative and the time and the money to make those new alignments in their schools. But when we look at it statewide, people haven't seemed to be responding to the incentives. And I'm just wondering if we really think that more incentives and more time will really rally the kind of movement that we would like to see. I guess I'm not totally sure that, that more incentives and more time will get real movement, more progress. So I kind of like the balance, although I understand the contradictory nature of it.
I truly don't know.
I tend to agree with you, Stacy, in regards to the, we need a little bit of both. And one of the things that I've experienced, and I think that we've seen statewide, is we have so many, so many board members that come together and it just doesn't happen fast. And then it turns over 20 to 30% every year. And without more clarity within the bill itself as to the direction where we want things to end, we aren't going to get it, it's not going to get done with incentives. We need to have incentives out there, I believe we do, but we need, we need much more clarity within the bill, and I think that'll help this, this paragraph of yours.
So that's, is that a consensus of this board that in the, in terms of, that we need more clarity, it goes to my opening comments about, you know, more criteria? Okay. Bill, you got that? Peter?
Just following up on that, certainly a lesson from Act, from 153 is that very difficult for boards to look out of their, their, their normal operational duties. If you, if you task them with, look at the big wide world and you're going to make some big decision, it's, I think it's very difficult for them to step, step outside of that realm. I don't know when, when it's appropriate to say this, but in relative to this discussion, but as we discuss this as a moving target, this, we, not, nothing is finite. But knowing the legislature, it's going to go quickly. And when we, when do we chime in and say, we think as a board, you know, this is where you're going astray, or this is really charging us with something that, that, that we have some problems or whatever?
Well, that's, that's what I was trying to set up with my initial comments, is that, that this process is really going to take on some, some speed here in the very near future. And so what I'm, what I've urged the legislative committee and what I'm suggesting here today is that give us some general principles of what needs to be in this legislation. And knowing full well that, that Bill is chair of the legislative committee, and who knows, he might even let me know what's going on, we'll have, we're going to have some say in this process as it goes along, and we may not have time to check back in with the full board every time that happens. So I'm trying to walk out of here today with a general sense of where the board is on some of these issues so that Bill and I can, can respond. So that's, thank you, Peter.
Short answer is I think we've got to start telling them tomorrow.
Great. I'd like to be there, too.
It's an open meeting.
Yeah. Krista?
I just hope there's one lesson we didn't lose from South Royalton, because when we were there.
What was that? I didn't hear the first part of what you said.
Oh, yeah. So we don't lose that lesson, that when we were there and they said what actually worked in the end was they had a cookout and coming together. And it wasn't legislation, it wasn't this, it was this actually coming down and seeing each other as people. And I'm not sure how we put that into legislation, I'm not sure if you can, but that's what worked. That's what worked for them. It was.
Have a picnic.
No, it really, but just.
This is jumping ahead, but, but once the legislation finally gets adopted, this board should think about what we can do to foster these discussions and whether, I'm not suggesting that we.
That's part of the capacity problem, is you've got to have people who are good facilitators, who have the judgment to know that a cookout is necessary or, or whatever.
That's what worked for them. I mean, that's out of everything. So let's not forget sometimes, thanks to simple things.
But I would, I would also argue that they were, they weren't told to have a barbecue on a certain day, but they said something needs to be done and they knew that they had to do something.
They had a deadline.
But they, yeah, exactly. They also had a deadline.
Yeah.
All right, I want to move this along because we've got a full agenda. Bill, what other issues do you want to?
Okay, education spending cap. I think we can quickly agree that that doesn't work too well and the different variations that are being talked about, it makes no difference whether it's one and a half or two and a half percent, it's, that's not going to work. And we'll just basically get in the way.
We, we should, here's my thought on that. We should share our thinking on that, but we should keep our, our real, real comments on, on the governance sections and let, but I haven't heard anybody that's in favor of this, this cap, so I don't think that's going to be.
It was thrown in at the last minute and quite frankly, I found it a distraction. And I would like to say, let's not be distracted here. Organizational fragmentation, I do need some input on this, on intermediate education systems. As I read it, is the existing structure of supervisory unions, districts, non-operating districts, union schools, et cetera, could still be there. And if they agree, they could continue those formats under an intermediate education system, which could potentially be an overlay, and you could have all this different combinations that. And you could have all this different combinations that are very unique. And to me, this seems like it becomes chaos in a hurry. You have too many different governance structures. Instead of opening it up to every possible combination, we need to work with four or five set models of what a governance structure should be. It doesn't have to be four or five, I'm just picking that out of the air. But this is too open-ended.
So do we all agree that this, this area needs more structure, more detail?
Yeah, I think it also, Krista and I chimed in on our, on our committee, alleged committee about the, the impact on students. None of this is addressing students, you know, giving them options that extend beyond what they currently have. And this is the whole dilemma.
That's a very good point.
And, and you know, this is the conflict between unified union structure where you have to have, every, every class has to have the same delivery per class versus the, you know, these SUs that have a whole, mine, mine has everything, early in Southwest. And how do we, how do we create opportunities for students when we're just looking at administrational, you know, at centralization of administration and governance?
Okay, I think we have consensus there. And again, the timelines, which gets into organizational processes, in two years, we have to have the plans completed. In four years, everything has to be reorganized. I think that's probably unrealistic. And I'm thinking, and this has been suggested in other places, that the state board be given some authority to waive timelines on a case-by-case kind of basis. Reason here being that some are going to be very simple. For example, I could see Middlebury with their existing supervisory union coming together very quickly. We have, we have differences of opinion here, but some of them are going to be pretty easy.
Is that because of the leadership on the board of the supervisory union?
Well, I'm sure it's the supervisory union leadership. But I think we're going to have to have some kind of relaxation on this. It's just too tight and.
But we're not going to argue to change the dates. We're going to argue for some authority to waive the, the dates.
Yeah, that's what I have written there.
Other language?
This to me is a smaller point. I find it too prescriptive, but it's not, it's not one of the big issues to me.
Maybe we, we don't bring that up now, then maybe that's something that's.
Well, I'm, one other thing is to.
See, what I'm doing is kind of rehearsing being before the Senate Act tomorrow with Bill to see what he's going to say if I say this.
It's good.
Well, you know, when he was on the speakerphone, I could just pull the plug on the speakerphone and it took care of the problem.
That's why I'm not on the speakerphone anymore. Berger Grants?
I think this is obvious and clear, and I think agreed, we've got to do this. The maximum loss, this has gotten a lot of attention. I think that you still need it, but not at the long tail that it has right now. But I don't know if Dave Sharp's three and a half percent of actual warm bodies of the previous year, I don't know whether that's too short. We pretty well know it's too long now, but the proposal may be too short. And I'm just simply saying, look at that carefully. Vaughn, do you, have you guys modeled that?
If anyone has Brad has, I haven't.
Okay. Out of state tuition, we've talked about that before and we concur that we should not be doing that. Roles of superintendents, principals, and board members, this was expanded to include board members and that's in there now. And we generally endorse that. That's the big things, folks.
So is that, just knowing that the world is going to change, does that summarize a pretty good consensus of where this board is coming from on, on some of the issues in this whole issue? Are you, are you all comfortable with it?
Yeah, I just have, I have a couple of questions in regards to, okay, first, getting back to like superintendent's and principals piece, when it says line staffing reporting authority requires, does, does legislators know what that means?
Yeah, probably.
Because I'm, well, that's, I'm not sure. Because I think that's important. I think what they understand is if, if there's an example given that a principal answers both to an, you know, an individual district board and to the superintendent, and there's no relationship between, I, I think some of those examples are really, really important. Otherwise, it just kind of gets pushed off the side, doesn't get changed. And that creates a tremendous amount of issues. And, and I guess this goes in line with the, the other thought that I had was, is, is the AOE and their expertise and the folks that are coming in front of these committees, do we, I know this is a tough question to answer, but are they being listened to? I, I mean, don't answer that if you don't want to, but I mean if.
There's a lot of transitional language in there in terms of contract. I, I've seen before and it's, if you look currently, I think there is quite a lot of language that addresses that.
I think there's a certain amount of speed that is characterized this process that would leave people thinking that some of the issues have not been fully fleshed out or thought about before being put forward.
Right. And at, at what point is that brought to the front? You know, and, and by who? And I don't mean just AOE and the state board, you know, VSBA, VSA, individual testimony.
I think it's fair to say that people's understanding of testimony tends to be framed by the governance system with which they're familiar. And so people often make inferences about roles based on the system they know, not realizing that those may be different in a different context. Is that a fair way to put it?
Just quickly, I mean, in regards to the roles, I think there's still quite a lot of confusion as to who's responsible for hiring in the state, from the boards to the superintendent to the principal and.
The statute is also a little.
Ambiguous.
Messy and ambiguous in some cases. There are some vestiges that are left from days when we had one-room schoolhouses that really haven't been updated to reflect the reality of how we do school now. And that creates room for ambiguity.
Is it, so just let me ask a, a quick question. So do I understand the consensus on this board is that we're in favor of, to put it simply, the superintendent being in charge of the stuff?
And everybody reports sequentially in their line staff relationships.
Right. And not, not to, well, hopefully there's only going to be one board anyway in these areas, but.
But that's not clear.
That's not clear. Okay.
It isn't clear.
All right. So there's consensus on that? Okay.
But I don't think our language is strong enough that that's our opinion. And I've stated that before.
On this particular issue?
I don't think our, the opinion that I'm hearing around the table is strong enough in the paper that's written.
We will, we will, we will do that by tomorrow. Take care of that.
Because I think.
As it relates to the rules.
As it relates to the rules. I believe that there's sort of this balancing act, you know, where you say there's contradictory things. I think that people would like their principals to run the school so that when you have a group of people, they want to give Stephen the authority as, you know, the principal to do it, to give Bonnie the authority, but then they don't have that connection with the superintendent. And then it, it just, I think it muddies the water.
All right.
And I also think that leads to, to governance clarity as well, because as long as local school boards, district school boards feel like they have authority over a principal, they don't need their supervisory union or.
Right.
Well, it's maybe something like the change here, that we're, we're a policymaking board. We're, we're not managing stuff. So maybe that's an analogy we, we can use of where this ought to go. We're running behind, but I don't want to rush this. So does, you think we've captured?
Just the, the one thing that I know Bill captured in the beginning of this, but how it comes out in the testimony, too, is that, I mean, I'm really worried by looking at this and a kid's opportunity. So when we're talking about these caps and coming in, there's this assumption that there's all this overspending going on in schools. And what do they want to see cut then? And that's where I like, and I'm worried that what they're cutting, because when, if you get capped at 2% and then you have to look at your budget, well, I can't go over 2% because then it's null and void. So I'm going to cut my after-school programs, I'm going to cut the mentoring, I'm going to cut art, I'm going to cut gym. And it's all these things that we care about. So I just want to make sure the conversation, too, gets back to kids and not, I mean, just what opportunities are there for them. So I hope that, I know you talk about the beginning, and I think that's really important. And I hope that comes out in the.
We, in a general way, have made it very clear to both committees that we're here to talk about governance, to improve the quality and the equality of education for all Vermont students. We're not here talking about whether you're going to save money, make money, or cost money.
And I hope that starts being reflected in legislation, because right now it's not.
Can I just say something very simply? Whoever controls the budget rules. And I think there's a lot of confusion on that front from looking at other, other bills that have been presented in trying to create this, this impression that locals can, can still have local control when, when they don't have the budget to, so that's.
Okay.
I do have one last kind of thing that Krista kicked off in my mind is.
This is when you've got to be careful, this is when Bill's sneaking something in on you.
No, no, it's already, it's already there. We didn't talk, they don't talk about EQS, they don't talk about opportunities to learn, they don't talk about ways in which we do improve education. And it really doesn't talk about saving money in any concrete kind of way. And one of the things I was, was saying is we need to be talking explicitly about these things in making these linkage. If the objective is in fact to save money, then put in some mechanisms that address saving money instead of thinking that by simply reorganizing and getting us a, a board that everything is automatically going to get better. It's, it's not. And so that was the biggest logic hole I found in the whole thing.
Rebecca?
My, we spoke to that as well in our testimony, and my understanding is the newest version, which hasn't come out, I'm told, is going to reflect a stronger emphasis on the education quality standards. So my hope is that you'll see that when it comes. We'll see what happens today.
This was their whole framework of change, is to base it on the, on evaluation of educational opportunities and quality and not necessarily centralizing functions or centralizing governance as much as looking at the quality of education. That's a very different framework.
Okay. I think we're in pretty good shape to, to go through this process. I'm going to, in the interest of time, ask Rebecca to give her report later on this afternoon. And I'd like to go to the special education report at this point.
Are we voting on this?
No. That's, the word consensus was used.
Numerous times. Numerous times.
Right. I do. Yes.
Cindy, do you want me to introduce or do you want to introduce?
They went down as low as like 42, but now they're back. All you need is two families.
I know.
Back on the record, Rebecca, would you like to introduce to, I'm sorry, Michael, please?
First of all, thank you. We're absolutely thrilled. It's very rare in Vermont that you actually get to cite research actually conducted in Vermont to inform good policy. So just to preface today's conversation, last week you had, last board meeting, we had a brief conversation around special ed. We've been looking at some of our outcomes for kids with disabilities. And I think we're all aware that we have some challenges, both around service delivery, but also how we fund and support education. So the intent of today is to bring two individuals who have extraordinary expertise locally in Vermont related to special education so that we can really learn from your research and work and use that to inform deliberative discussions here at this level around effective service and funding of special education in the state of Vermont. So the first one is Michael Giancreco from UVM, and I'm going to save time by going directly to you.
Thanks very much. Well, I really appreciate the opportunity to be here. And I'm going to try to do kind of a condensed version of what I shared with both House Education and Senate Education. So I'm, I am not going to go over everything that I provided to you in the written testimony, except to say that I found an important typo on, on page five, which is, I think it's page five, where the word "not" was missing from the fourth line down. They did not address root problems. So missing the word "not," kind of important. So basically, what I want to share with you are three big issues that I shared with the legislature. And then I want to share some interrelated data that we've collected. Again, it'll be a subset of what's in the written testimony. And then talk about some cautions and some potential actions. I was glad, I was glad I was here for part of the, other part of the meeting here to hear some of the things that were said in terms of focus on education quality and so on, and, and not making kind of rash decisions at the legislative level. Because one of the pieces of, of advice that I offered to the legislators was, I was very concerned about potentially having kind of, for lack of a better word, kind of a knee-jerk legislative response, that these are very complex issues and that they really require some thoughtful deliberation that probably will require more time and more different stakeholders involved than the legislators. So no, no single action, no quick fix to this. It's going to be a, you know, progression over time. So let me start with the big one, which, you know, was most of concern to the legislators. And I was so happy to hear the, just most recent comments that you all made about the focus being on making sure that there's educational quality for our, our students, because that's certainly, you know, my focus as well. But basically, people have been talking about concerns about special education funding for the last 20 years. I personally was involved with the fiscal review panel for seven years with the then department. And we've had the, the same consistent problems over time. You know, we have a system, because it's primarily a reimbursement model, that incentivizes identifying students as, as disabled in order for them to receive services. That's fundamentally one of the biggest issues. Schools are finding it unnecessarily burdensome and time-consuming in terms of the time studies and so on. And I don't know if anybody's ever really calculated the cost involved in all of that in terms of faculty and staff time, administrative time, plus the time on the agency's end in terms of going through all that data. We're, we're also, I'm also concerned that it interferes with innovation. Schools are constantly being asked to innovate and keep up with educational research, yet some of the rules that we have in place make it very difficult for them to do that. And, and as I said, it incentivizes identifying students as disabled. One of the other things that I'm concerned about, and I say this with all due respect, is what I described as escalating gamesmanship. So what's happened is there's kind of this thing that goes back and forth between the state and local schools where schools spend money on something and then costs go up. And it's like, how can we keep these costs down? So the state puts in a rule. And sometimes it's just a practice that comes from the agency. And then some of those practices over time get codified as regulations or laws. And then the, then the schools try to find another way within the rules to get more money because again, it's based on reimbursement for, for students with disabilities. And this goes back and forth. And I think it's a, not a helpful or healthy way for us to be doing our education spending. And in some cases, it actually drives practices in the opposite direction as we're asking people to do. So, I mean, we had to put in, and the, and the agency was responsive in this regard in terms of putting in some new opportunities for people to do things like co-teaching. But prior to the new things that were put in place, the rules that were currently in place made it difficult for people to do that because they couldn't be reimbursed for time that was spent with kids who didn't have disabilities. And there were proportion rules around having at least half of the students be either on an IEP or a 504 plan or an educational support team plan. And I do think that there's a lot of hidden personnel costs in this. So this is, this is one of the big issues. The second big issue, because I'm interested in really moving past the, the funding part of it, and it's equitable access to inclusive schooling. One of the things that you may be aware of is that for many years, actually decades, Vermont was the top-ranked state in the country in terms of providing regular class placement to students with disabilities. We are no, no longer number one, we are now number four. We're still above the, the federal average or the, the national average. But at the same time, we have a tremendous amount of variability within the state. So this, this first bullet point demonstrates the range of regular class placement, and that's defined in the, in the federal number counting, as a student being in regular class 80% of the day or more. So looking at that. So, looking at that highest category. And it ranges by supervisory unions from below fifty percent to ninety percent. So, one of the issues here is that if you have a child with a disability, whether they have access to be in regular class depends on where they live. And that shouldn't happen in any state, but especially in a state that's as small as ours, that level of variability is not what you want to see. And of course, this is supervisory union data, and the variation by school is even wider. So, that's a problem. I believe personally, based on my twenty-seven years working in Vermont schools, is that this is fundamentally a misunderstanding and misapplication of the least restrictive environment provisions of the IDEA, which I've added some detailed information on the last couple pages of my written testimony for you about what the law basically says about this, and also what federal interpretation is about this, based on friend-of-the-court briefs that have been submitted in, for example, you know, in court cases at the Court of Appeals level, so one level below the Supreme Court. And basically, what it says in a nutshell is that the first placement option that we're supposed to consider for every student who has a disability, regardless of the label of the category of disability, or the severity of disability, is where would they go to school, and what class would they be in if they didn't have a disability? And what supplemental supports and aids would be required in order for them to have their educational needs met in that regular class? Where people, the misapplication, misunderstanding part comes in, I think, because people ask the wrong question. They say, "Well, if we put these supports in place, will the student be able to do the same work as the other kids in that, say, fifth grade?" The law and the federal interpretation from both the Department of Education and the Justice Department Office of Civil Rights has been very clear, very explicit, and I included some of their language in the written testimony, that students with disabilities do not have to function at or near grade level in order for them, for the regular class to be the least restrictive environment for them. The question is, can we meet their educational needs, their individualized educational needs, in the regular class? And it's one of the reasons why we see a dramatic, this misunderstanding, I think, is one of the reasons we see a dramatic drop in regular class placement as students get older. Because when they're in kindergarten, we say, "Well, the gap's kind of small, so we can deal with that." And then the gap gets bigger every year for some of our kids. Not all of them, but for some of them. And then we, at some point, we say, "Well, you know, this is just not working, they can't do the work." And, so again, people are asking the wrong questions. So one of the things I hope that the agency takes on is not only looking at how to deal with this funding issue, but how to deal with this issue of least restrictive environment. And this is both an educational issue for students with disabilities, and it is a civil rights issue for people, for students with disabilities. It's one of the reasons that the language that I shared with you in the testimony comes from both the Department of Education and the Justice Department, because they clearly recognize this as, and it's the Civil Rights Division, so clearly recognize it as both an educational issue and a civil rights issue for students with disabilities. The other thing to be aware of is that the other, I think, evidence of this misunderstanding is that the dramatic differences in the rate of regular class placement for students, not only by age, but by disability category. So if you have what under IDEA is a specific learning disability, you're probably going to be in regular class eighty percent of the time or more for your entire school career. And similarly, for students who have other high-incidence disabilities, maybe some more mild speech-language impairments and so on, but if you look at students with intellectual disabilities, multiple disabilities, autism, deaf-blindness, et cetera, you see that the rates go down, down, down as they age. And again, when you talk to people about that, it's like, "Why aren't they accessing regular class?" Well, they, you know, they can't do the same work as the other kids. And, again, that's not a reason to exclude students. And we also, you know, we've also seen an uptick in the number of students who are in newly-formed special classes. Now, we, because we're Vermont, and we have a long history of including kids, we have a lot of euphemistic names for these special classes, but they are, in fact, special classes, where they only serve kids with disabilities. And in town meetings, it comes up all the time, you know, "Why can't we just group these kids together?" And so, one of the things that I really tried to make clear to the legislature was that they couldn't put in place suggestions or rules that violate the federal law. And lots of times, they're not necessarily fully informed about all the nuances in the federal law, but one of the things that is very clear in the federal interpretation is you can't purposely group kids together for, you know, to help your bottom line financially, you know, you can't do it. And what we've been seeing is really an inverse relationship between the intensity of special education need and access to highly-qualified personnel. So again, if you have a high-incidence disability, what might be considered a mild disability, the kind of disability that, once you're done with school, people would probably not identify you easily as a person who has a disability, those kids are getting pretty good access to highly-qualified regular education teachers. Again, those more lower incidence categories of disability, those students are getting less and less of that. I'm going to share some data with you about that in a moment. And students with more intensive needs, you know, are getting an increasing amount of their instruction from paraprofessionals instead of teachers. And what's really interesting about that is it's often done with the guise of benevolence, and not even the guise of benevolence, that's the wrong way to say it. People really think that they're doing kids a favor by saying, "Hey, we're going to assign an individual person to you." But then, lots of times, that person may or may not be highly-trained to do the work that we're asking them to do. And the question, the last point here on this slide is asking the question, would it be okay for students who didn't have disabilities? So, I'm going to share some data with you, in fact, I'll put it up now. This is data from three hundred and sixty-five Vermont students over the last approximately six years, who are receiving one-to-one paraprofessional supports. And on average, they're getting about forty percent of their instruction from paraprofessionals. And some of those students are receiving eighty, ninety, in this case, in one case, ninety-five percent of his or her instruction from a paraprofessional. Is there any school district in this state that would think that it's okay for a student without disabilities to be getting ninety-five percent, or even forty percent, the average, of their instruction from a paraprofessional who may or may not, you know, have varying levels of educational background, probably aren't certified teachers, et cetera? We would never consider that. But, again, we kind of approach kids with disabilities, particularly kids with low-incidence disabilities, like we're doing them a favor by doing this. And I would like to suggest to you that we're not doing them a favor at all by doing this. So, we've created this system that's increasingly reliant on paraprofessionals, and, I mean, I'm asking the question, you know, can quality-inclusive education be supported on their backs? I don't think so. But we went down this path starting in the nineteen-eighties, and we just continued down the path. I want to share this kind of national and state perspective with you. So, let me just separate the three lines for you, and the two blue lines go with the right vertical axis, and the red line goes with the left red vertical axis. So, the dotted line is the regular class placement percentage of students with disabilities nationally. And you can see it from nineteen ninety until two thousand and eleven, it's just kind of steadily going up, but at a very slow clip. The solid blue line, which kind of has a downward trajectory, is Vermont's data that it shares with the federal government each year. So, we went down in approximately twenty percentage points. We've ticked up a little bit the last couple of years. This has been an indicator of interest to the AOE, they've identified it, which is important, and frankly, as soon as they identified it and started taking action related to it, we did see a slight uptick in it. The red line is the, and now we're switching from percentage to numbers, is the number of special education paraprofessionals during that same time period. And you can, and so, when you adjust for changes in child count, basically, back in the early nineties, we had about one paraprofessional, one special ed paraprofessional, for every nine students on an IEP, and the more recently, it's been about one to four. The other thing to keep in mind, and this will come up with some other slides as well, is that I believe that the number of special education paraprofessionals that we count in the data that we share with the feds may be undercounted. And the reason that I believe that it's undercounted is because we, we meaning schools, hire a very substantial number of paraprofessionals that have different titles, like quote "behavior interventionists," that come from other agencies, and I'm not sure that those folks are all counted in this count. My understanding is that they're not counted in this count. So, one of the things to be really careful about as we talk about this is that paraprofessionals, anything that I'm sharing with you in no way should be construed as being anti-paraprofessional or eliminating paraprofessionals. It's just that there is some data out there about how to use paraprofessionals wisely, and it's very logical stuff, like they should be appropriately trained to implement evidence-based approaches with fidelity, that they should be providing supplemental instruction, not the primary instruction to students, that they should be appropriately supervised, and their work should be monitored. And there's some very basic kind of logical things that have been identified in the literature for decades. The problem is that that's not the way that we operate, and it's not just us in Vermont, it's all over the country and all over the world. So, we know how to use them well, but we, frankly, we don't use them well. We usually just throw them in and, you know, give them the, a minimal approach to things, and we let them loose. Vermont, and let me explain what this slide is. Every dot is a state, okay? And the special services concentration along the bottom is the ratio of special education paraprofessionals to special education teachers. So the vertical, the vertical solid line at one is showing that that's where there's one paraprofessional for every one special educator. And what you see is that all the states to the left of the solid vertical line, they have more special ed teachers in FTE than special ed paraprofessionals. And all of the states to the right of the solid vertical line, they have more paraprofessionals than special ed teachers in FTE. For the longest time, Vermont was by far the outlier out to the right. Just in the most recent federal data, New Hampshire and Kansas have bypassed us, but I actually, you know, all the federal data are very gross data. I actually believe that we're further out than that. Our data suggests, and I'll show this to you in a moment, that we're actually probably more like above three. We have a sample of now seventy Vermont schools, so it's a pretty good chunk of Vermont schools. And frankly, the story of the data hasn't changed since we probably had eight or ten schools. I mean, it's very consistent data over time and across school districts. So, we have relatively many more special ed paraprofessionals than special ed teachers. One of the things I want to be really clear about is, I'm not advocating for just cutting paraprofessionals. People are always saying, "Well, we should just have fewer paraprofessionals." All of the work we've been doing is about putting in place alternatives to have, you know, to serve a function, so that schools are better, not just cutting, okay? So I want to be really clear about that, because occasionally I hear about school districts using some of our data in ways that it was not intended, and that's certainly not intended. We have found also that, in the sample that we have, and now, actually, it's seventy-four schools, but I've got to say that a couple of those schools, I think three are not Vermont schools. But this has been true in Vermont as well. The sample of schools we've looked at, about half of all the special ed paraprofessionals are, so this is the right circle, the right pie chart, have been one-to-one paraprofessionals. So we've moved away from, we're basically saying, and this is part of the gamesmanship as well, that goes on within schools. So there's a gamesmanship between the schools and the state, and then there's the gamesmanship between the education teams and the administrations of the schools. So it's like, okay, and our paraprofessional numbers have run amok, we need to put some hurdles in place to stop this number from going up and up and up as it's been going the last twenty years. And so, you know, you're only going to get a paraprofessional if you really can demonstrate that you need one. And we've put in place, schools have put in place, these justification systems. We have found that these justification systems are rooted in, they're all rooted in looking at student characteristics, and almost not at all looking at the characteristics of the school and the programs. And ultimately, they've been unsuccessful, and I won't go into detail about this, but if anybody's interested, we've, our project has published a paper on this that kind of debunks these models. They have not been effective. So, we do have, there's research that shows that there are a host of unintended detrimental effects associated with supporting kids one-to-one. And again, lots of times, it's done for benevolent, with benevolent intention, but if you're a student with a disability and you have a one-to-one paraprofessional, there's quite a bit of evidence, not just from our project, but it's been replicated by other researchers, that it interferes with the teachers taking ownership for the kids, which is vital to their educational success. It interferes with their peer interactions. As kids get older, they find it stigmatizing, can actually be a source of bullying, in terms of they get teased because they have a paraprofessional. There's about a dozen or more unintended detrimental effects. The other thing that we found, and this relates to some of the potential actions you might take, is we found that there is a variable that we think is a very important one, that can help shift us maybe away from this reimbursement mentality and counting kids with disabilities. We call it special educator-school density. It is the ratio of special education teacher, FTE, full-time equivalence, in a school compared to their total population, their total enrollment. And what we found, and these are all Vermont schools, so it is seventy-four Vermont schools now, is that, you can have a school that has one special ed teacher in full-time equivalence for every thirty-seven children who attend that school. So not children with disabilities, but children who attend that school. And at the other end, one to one hundred and sixty-six. Now, this is just based on our data collection, but we found that, just anecdotally, there are ones that are even higher than that, or less well-resourced than that. So what's really interesting is that the one to thirty-seven and the one to sixty-six are in school districts that are right next to one another. And some of the big differences are within school, within supervisory unions or school districts. We're finding that this number not only is highly correlated with the percentage of students identified as disabled, because in the school districts that have low special educator-school density, they tend to have a high percentage of kids identified as disabled. And so, in one school, and then in the opposite, the one to one hundred and sixty-six, they tend to have a low percentage identified as disabled. So, what's happening is schools that do a good job from a policy perspective and a practice perspective, doing the things that the AOE is trying to encourage them to do, like develop educational support team models and multi-tiered systems of support to help stop kids on the bubble from getting into the special ed system but meeting their needs through regular ed, those schools get financially punished for doing a good job. Because what happens is, people say, "Well, now you have fewer kids with disabilities." This school at one to one hundred and sixty-six, they had seven percent of their population identified as having a disability. They're not different than many of the schools below, say, sixty, because what our data shows is that if you take the three categories of students on IEPs, students on Section 504 plans, and students on educational support team plans, on average, you're talking roughly about twenty-eight percent of the school population has some kind of special need in that regard. The difference is, how many of them are labeled as having a disability? And it is really a labeling issue. Here's what Vermont schools look like in terms of that special services concentration. Out of seventy-four schools, we identified one tiny, tiny school that had more special education FTE than special educator FTE, and it was the kind of thing where they had a point-eight special educator and a point-five paraprofessional. All of the other schools we identified had more special ed paraprofessional. All of the other schools we identified had more special ed paraprofessionals, some of them five, six, seven. One had eight times as many special ed paraprofessionals as special ed teachers. What that leads to, on average, is that if you look at the universe of special education instruction, in terms of instruction provided by either special ed teachers or related services providers or special ed paraprofessionals, about three-quarters of that instruction for Vermont students is coming from paraprofessionals, not from highly qualified professionals. And the reason is very simple. There's more than three times as many of them and special ed teachers report to us through the quantitative data that we've collected, that the paraprofessionals spend more time in instruction than do the special education teachers. And on average, a typical special ed paraprofessional in Vermont can expect to receive approximately 2% of their time in supervision from a special ed teacher. And that's impossible. We have some special ed teachers who are supervising as many as double digits in terms of, they're supervising 10, 12, some of them 14. Now, that's not the average, but it goes up that high. And this relates to your discussion on school quality standards. We have had for decades, school quality standards that address regular education. I have never seen anywhere in our school quality standards where there's anything related to special education. A lot of states have caseload parameters, we don't have any. And, you know, we just don't see school quality standards related to our special services. So what we have is metaphorically, we have built our special education house on the cliff, okay? And basically what we're doing is we've built it, and part of it is this, the finance and having the resources to do this and also how we use our resources and our models, but we've built our house so close to the edge that any additional stress people are afraid is going to push it over the edge. And we've been holding it back by keeping on adding paraprofessionals. Instead of saying, you know what, we need to build our house a little bit back from the brink and we never need to allow it, we shouldn't allow it to get so close to the brink. And, you know, it's, wouldn't this be better if we built on more solid footing, you know, get more paraprofessionals, keep them coming, you know, is our service delivery model built too close to the edge? I'm quite confident that it is built too close to the edge. And so the evidence of this is a new student, let's say with autism, moves into a school district and the very first thing that happens in almost every place is that the team goes to the principal and says, we need another paraprofessional. If we had a model of service delivery that was appropriately staffed, and it means having the discussion about what is appropriate staffing in a school, not based on identifying the number of students with disabilities, but based on demographics that we know about populations, knowing that we're going to expect to see 25 to 30% of the kids having some special need, so that we can say, in a school that size, you need X number minimally, X number of special educators and if you want to go with paraprofessionals, and then you should be able to operate in this range. We have developed based on, based on average data from these 70-some schools, we have developed an example. We're not suggesting this is the way to do it, but it's an example of what can be done with average resources currently in Vermont. Right now, with average resources, you can have class sizes up to 21 and have, let's say, a grade level team of three teachers that work with one special educator, so that the special educator's role is reduced in terms of the grade levels that they're covering, the amount of curriculum that they're, that they need to know. Because what's happening in a lot of our schools is the special educator caseloads are, they're not well thought through and then what ends up happening is they're covering five or six grades, which means now they have to be more knowledgeable about a wider range of curriculum and they're dealing with a much wider range of teachers and they can't get as much done, they can't have as much oomph in what they're doing. And then this is all bolstered by a, you know, multi-tiered system of support. And you, in this, in this model, there's enough to have one to, one and a half paraprofessionals that would be shared funded between regular ed and special ed. Right now, schools are having trouble doing this because of the role, because of the fiscal rules that are in place around the use of paraprofessionals and how they can be used. From a school model perspective, this is, the idea is, this is an example for schools anywhere between 357 and 441 students. And at kindergarten, you could have three paraprofessionals for three teachers. Every kindergarten teacher that I have talked to over the last 25 years needs hands, just hands, you know? And so, and plus, with what you're trying to do in terms of early education, you could, you could, you have, we have enough average resource currently to have that in kindergarten, have grade level teams with, say, three teachers, and there's a four, four teacher model for this as well, and you'd still have three paraprofessionals left over that I call floating paraprofessionals. One of the reasons, and that would leave your school, your special ed school density at one to 63, okay, on average, 100 less than, than some of the ones that we're looking at. But again, I want to emphasize is this is just an example and this is a cost-neutral model, okay, that you could, that you could use. One of the reasons that, some of the things that the floating paraprofessionals could do is fill in for absences. I mentioned that special educator school density item, this, this one. One of the other pieces of data that we have learned about this based on a study done in 52 Vermont schools, is that there is a very strong relationship between this data point and the absence level, the absence rates of special ed teachers. In schools, for example, that are down at around one to, one to 72, a little bit below this current mean average, those special educators are absent about 10 days a year, okay, which is pretty consistent with what the national data are about regular ed teachers. In schools that are up at 110, just as an example, those, those special education teachers are absent twice as much. They are absent 20 days a year. And if you talk to people, they'll say, hey, they're taking a mental health day, they're taking a day, they're actually working, they're taking a day to do paperwork, but they're calling in sick. You know, it's all off the record, but that's the kind of thing that's happening. And it's because we don't have a good model that supports people doing the work that we're asking them to do. So in terms of cautions, I just mentioned before, you know, no, no quick fix to this and, you know, I know we're short on time, so I'm going to stop in just a moment, but I've listed the, the cautions on here for you about this. And also, people, you know, often say, why don't we just train the paraprofessionals better? And I described in here something we call the training trap. And the training trap is just the idea that we, we train paraprofessionals and then we expect, we give them like this much training and then we expect them to function like teachers. And that's a problem. But I guess the point of this, this slide is to say, you know, everybody's looking at this over time, this big increase in the use of paraprofessionals, and I want to suggest to you that the paraprofessionals are not the problem. They are a symptom of the problem. You know, you're on the deck of the Titanic and you look out in the nighttime at the dark, murky water and the only thing you see is the tip of the iceberg, right? But the tip of the iceberg is not the thing that's sinking the ship. It's the stuff that's under the surface that's a lot harder to see and a lot harder to get at. That's where the damage gets caused. And it is things like roles, caseloads, teacher engagement, class size, a lot of other issues. So, and again, I want to reiterate the idea that simply cutting or reducing paraprofessional numbers is, I believe is not the answer. So in terms of potential actions, I'd like to suggest that, you know, and I suggested this to legislators, that, that the AOE undertake reform of the special ed funding, that looks at ways at incentivizing desirable practice so that it's aligned, and Tammy's going to be talking to you about this more. We need to be having a financial system that is driven by what we want for kids, not the other way around. Right now, we've got financial practices that are driving, financial practices that are driving practice in the schools. That's backwards from my perspective. And I think it's backwards from your perspective based on what I heard you say earlier. Schools need, you know, flexibility to be able to innovate. They need to be able to maintain accountability, but they need to be able to innovate. And in moving away hopefully from a reimbursement model that incentivizes this identification of students with disabilities, I do think that you're going to need some hybrid elements to this to protect small schools while they still exist, because there are real issues for small schools. Small number changes have a bigger magnitude in those small schools. So, and I think you also want to make an adjustment, and it may be more than what is currently based on the, you know, the old Brigham, Brigham decision about adjustments related to poverty. Because kids, a school of 400 that is a suburban affluent school and a school of 400 that is, has a high poverty rate are very different schools. And giving them the same amount of money to work with their students is not going to be equitable, in my estimation. And I want to just, you know, one of the things that the community in general asks a lot is, you know, why are we doing all this stuff for kids with disabilities? What about the other kids, you know, we have too much emphasis on special education? And this cartoon is based on something that actually happened in a Vermont school and was shared by a student with a disability who shows up on a snowy morning and getting off the bus with the other kids and the custodian is shoveling the front stairs to the school. And she asks him, could you please shovel the ramp? And he says back to her, you know, all these other kids are waiting to use the stairs. When I'm done clearing the stairs, then I'll, you know, shovel the ramp for you. And she points out to them that if you shovel the ramp first, we can all get in. And so the kinds of changes that would be made to support kids with disabilities, that would be consistent with the MTSS model that the state is encouraging, the multi-tiered systems of support and so on, these changes have the great potential to benefit lots of students, not just students with disabilities. So the funding that you spend, if it's used wisely towards some of these, some of these needs can have a much broader impact. So again, there's a lot more in here. I know we're tight on time, so I'm going to stop there and see if you have any questions for me before Tammy comes on.
Thank you. Great presentation.
Yeah, just quickly, I was on the House Education Committee for eight years and you testified before us what's happened the last eight years. That's one of the, and you mentioned at the very end, poverty. And I would particularly emphasize generational poverty relative to special ed and warehousing or tracking another system, dealing with these, these kids, are they really disabled or are they just really challenged by virtue of where they're coming from?
Yeah, again, well, that's a great question and, you know, the differences in identification of kids with disabilities, the school districts, I mean, we have school districts that identify 25% of their population as having a disability. We have others that are in single digits. And again, part of that is getting reimbursement, but the only kids that we're going to probably see moving between these categories of being classified as disabled or not disabled are the kids at the top of the ability spectrum, so to speak. Because kids who have severe autism, kids who have intellectual disability, they're going to be identified as having a disability in every school district in the state. The difference comes with the kids that are the highest functioning kids who are primarily having difficulty in reading and math and academics and so on, and maybe some behavior issues, it's a big issue in the schools. So, you know, I think right now there probably are lots of kids who end up in special education because of their lack of early opportunities, because of issues related to poverty, who aren't, you know, don't have some kind of neurological basis or whatever for their, for their disability. So, yeah, the more we can do to help those students without labeling them as disabled, but again, if that's the only path that schools see, they say, look, you know, the EST, you were talking about unfunded mandates before, EST was an unfunded mandate. So it's like, yeah, that's great, let's do EST, but then what happened after EST is our numbers went down and after a couple of years, they started creeping back up. We were historically below the federal average in percentage of kids identified as disabled. Now we're above it. And it's where the money is.
Bill?
Yeah, three-part question. First, if we block grant the special education base amount, that will get rid of the incentive, I would think. The second part of the question is, why are we getting all of the increases in the number of kids classified and why are we getting this rise in the number of AIDS? Why did that phenomena happen? And you mentioned categorical weights for poverty being low. Do you have a mechanism that we can look at to where we could rationalize that number or get a better feeling as to what our real cost would be?
I think that might be a better question for Tammy. I am not a finance person at all, so I don't have any.
Well, Tammy will answer that.
I don't have any finance mechanisms for you. I think I, I'm not sure that, I understood the question in the first one, I thought I heard a statement, but.
Big part, well, Tammy can.
It often happens. But I, but I can respond to the middle part about why the increase in AIDS. Paraprofessionals, parareducators, they're called different things in different school districts. And this is an overgeneralization, but given our timeframe. I believe what happened, and some of you were around during the homecoming period in Vermont, which was the mid to late 1980s, when we had federal grants that were designed to help bring kids back from the regional classrooms that we had around Vermont. And these were kids with, with more intensive needs. And bring them back into their neighborhood schools, into regular classes. And I think we made a cardinal error back in the day that we just perpetuated and never addressed. We basically, and again, an overgeneralization, but we basically went to schools hat in hand with kids that had the most severe disabilities. And we basically said, look, we want to bring these kids back into your regular classroom, but don't worry, because you don't have to change. You don't have to do anything different than you've been doing all along, because we're going to give you a full-time paraprofessional, there's going to be therapists that are going to come that are going to take the kid out and do some magic in a closet with them. We're going to, we're going to give you a consulting special education teacher, you know, we're going to do all kinds of things. And the message was, you don't have to change. And another really disturbing part of the message was, we're asking for volunteers because we don't want to impose on you by asking you to do something that you're unaccustomed to doing or might be uncomfortable doing. And think about that related to any other diversity characteristic of a student. We would never do it and if we did do it, we would have the Office of Civil Rights down our throats in an instant and rightly so. We would never say, based on religion, race, socioeconomic level, look, teacher, you know, we know you're not used to working with a kid that has this type of characteristic. So if you want to reject them, you can, we'll look for another, because we don't want to put a kid in a situation where somebody doesn't want them, right? That's just fundamentally wrong, from my perspective. And so we, we did this to kind of soft shoe our way into the regular classroom, so we didn't upset the apple cart too much. And then it just became the go-to thing. And we have a lot of people who think that the, a kid sitting in the back of the classroom, that island in the mainstream, that quote, that's inclusion, you know, because hey, they're in the class and what else do you want, you know? So it's just gone up and up and it's been an easy thing for people to do. And when we look at the data that we've collected, everybody's behind it. So in terms of who makes the decision or who's in favor of the decision to hire the assistant, it's everybody. A lot of people think it's the parents, like that the parents are driving this. The, the level of agreement between parents, teachers, the principal, everybody's on board, because what it does is, it pushes the, it pushes the pain back a while, you know what I mean? So it just is analgesic, it doesn't really deal with the problem.
I think we've got to move on.
Yes.
Thank you, that was a great presentation.
My pleasure, thank you.
If people have specific questions, why don't you email them to me, because I know I have questions too and I will forward on the board's behalf any questions.
Thank you.
Great use of cartoons.
I was trying to.
Now we're moving on to item J, Tammy Colby from the University of Vermont. We're going to continue the conversation on special ed. Welcome. For the record, Tammy, would you just state your name and your?
I sure will, if I can multitask at the same time. My name is Tammy Colby, I'm an assistant professor at the University of Vermont. My background is actually in policy, in particular, school funding, policy resources. Prior to joining University of Vermont, I was a consultant with ACT Associates where I was the project director for the National Special Education Expenditure Project. I've also currently am an expert witness in the court case for the plaintiffs in Connecticut on special education funding. I've worked with the Education Law Center around issues of special education funding and have written and published around issues of special education funding policy. Michael did a great job. Let me see if I can get this up fast enough here. That was my, I thought it would come up fast enough. Great.
Thank you.
Great. So, Michael did a really good, and of course, I'm cognizant of the fact it's 10 minutes till lunch, so I will do my best to cover things quickly. I know you've all been sitting for a while this morning. So, you know, Michael does a great job, right? Because he brings up all these key issues around practice and opportunities to learn and this sort of vantage point from the field, which is so powerful and so important. And really, I think, as he's sort of tipped his hand and tipped my hand a little bit, is what are likely some fairly significant unintended consequences that are a result of the current funding system in Vermont? That's okay, that's okay, I got it. And so, what I really want, when I talk with Sidney Miranda, the special education director, about coming today, what she asked me to do is really talk broadly about sort of understand, provide some frameworks around how we might start to understand special education funding at large, and also some policy frameworks around core principles for reform, how other people are sort of the range of options around funding approaches, how sort of special education funding in Vermont sort of falls within that landscape, as well as some key considerations for moving forward with reform. Okay? So, my discussion is less about down in the weeds, it's more a big picture discussion about some policy issues and some key principles for thinking about how you might consider moving forward with reform. So, the first thing I want to talk about, special education costs. And I think this is really important because when we talk about costs, we're talking about what's happening way out on the right-hand side, right? I mean, we're talking about the end result. But costs fundamentally are a function of a bunch of different things, right? The number of students who are identified, how they're classified, and the federal government has 13 categories for classification, those are those autism, blind, deaf, hard of hearing, learning disabled, disabilities, emotional impairments, right? So, we have identification, but we also have classification, right? And we also have how students are placed and served, right? And this was getting, starting to get at some of the things that Michael was bringing up about least restrictive environment, inclusion, but also sort of the package of services and IEPs. It's those three interrelated things that ultimately, right, determine the cost of serving a student with disabilities and providing a free and appropriate public education in the least restrictive environment, okay? So, that's the policy framework that we're really dealing with here. And if you think of each one of these boxes, these are very different points of entry for thinking about policy. And you can also think about policies impacting each one of these things. Oftentimes, we think about policy just impacting costs, but the reality is there's a complex interplay here among identification, classification, placement and services and costs that we have to consider whenever we're thinking about funding policy when it comes to special education. And so, with that as a backdrop, I'd like to offer sort of this idea of there are four key principles when we start to talk about special education funding reform. And these principles are true for funding reform for general education, but there's some really specific and specialized concepts that are unique to special education. And I want to talk about this notion of appropriate and adequate, policy funding alignment, which is one of the issues Michael prefaced before, and I think Bill was starting to get at. This third issue is simplicity and transparency, and the fourth one is predictability. And all four of those things are, have, carry a different weight. The first goal that we talk about a lot in special education is appropriate services. And that falls under the federal statute, IDA. And what we're most concerned here is we need to make sure that our funding system provides sufficient resources to ensure students with disabilities receive appropriate services and support, as well as access to the general education curriculum. And as Michael's great, I love his cartoons, that, you know, access to the general education curriculum is not sitting in the back corner with the parapro, right? That's not accessing the general education curriculum. But we also can consider all these notions at the least possible cost. Federal law does not say that we can't, we don't have, we shouldn't consider costs, right? Cost shouldn't, but cost shouldn't determine appropriate services. So, if we think of these things, that leads us to a couple of things that we can start to think about with regard to design considerations. Importantly, incentive and disincentives in our funding system for student identification and classification, and also the impact on decisions regarding educational systems and supports. Our funding system impacts all of those things, particularly with regard to staffing, and particularly with regard to restrictive placements. The second big thing we need to think about when we're, when we're moving forward with funding reforms, is this idea of policy funding alignment. And this, again, Michael prefaced to think this nicely, which is, our funding mechanism should be aligned with our policy goals, right? What's driving the bus? The money or the policy about what's best for kids? And I would suggest that we want policy what's best for kids and the fundings, and a funding system that supports those goals. And in Vermont, we've made a very strong commitment to multi-tiered systems of support, and RTI, and educational support system policy framework. We need, when we're thinking about reform, we need to think about funding reforms that support those kinds of policy goals. And if we're going to do that in terms of design considerations, we need to think about how funding, our funding formula is going to incent or disincentivize educational practices that are aligned with these current policy priorities for serving all children who require additional assistance to succeed in the general education environment. And that's all children, not just students with IEPs. We also need to remove financial penalties that discourage or interfere with innovation and service delivery, right? We want to make sure that our schools are not hampered to innovate and do what's best for kids by the categorization of funding or how our funding approaches are set up, right? And we hear that from school administrators, right? When we have categorization of funding and they have to think in terms of buckets of funding and how they structure, you know, policy and practice and resources in their schools, it impacts their decision-making. And that can be both inefficient, but also inequitable, right? We end up with inequities in our system for how we think about serving kids. The third thing is, and this is really important from a policy perspective, is this idea of simplicity and transparency. We hear this pushback all the time from our, from our local school administrators, right? Whatever funding mechanism we have should be straightforward and transparent in its approach to distributing funds. How many people here can tell me how our school funding formula works for special ed? Yeah, it took me an hour. Bill? And Bill and I, and I thought I knew, I spent, you know, Bill and, these guys are great, right? But I mean, this is not easy stuff, right? I mean, it's hard. And, you know, I would challenge everybody other than Bill, raise his hand, right? I mean, it, this is a tough thing. It is not simple, and it is certainly not transparent, right? It's not simple, it's not transparent, and that's a problem from, from a policy perspective, right? And what, we have to think in terms of design considerations then, that we need sort of a system that minimizes state administrative costs. Michael prefaced that, right? We know that the existing reimbursement system is cost burdensome in lots of different ways, not just fiscally, but also in terms of personnel time. But we also need to think in terms of eliminating spending incentives and this gamesmanship that Michael talked about, right? On the part of state and local education agencies. We need to think in terms of simplicity and transparency. And then, the other big one in the legislature desperately needs, and so do most local school boards, right, is this notion of predictability, right? Right now, our special education finance formula asks schools and districts to project almost 18 months out in advance what, what their special education population is going to get, look like, right? And then, back into a number, and then there's these crosses, checks and checks and that, it's crazy. I mean, it's hard, right? It's very unpredictable, it makes it very difficult for us to establish sound fiscal policy that serves kids in perpetuity. And so, a key goal is to come up with an effective and efficient resource, a strategy that supports effective and efficient resource allocation decisions on the part of state and local policymakers and practitioners. And to do that, we need something that's both stable and predictable. Design considerations that we need to keep in, is sort of, we need to think about this issue of being able to predict with some degree of accuracy what annual special education costs and revenues are going to look like. And we need to deal with this issue of the annual carryover, right? Because we have a reimbursement model, sometimes we're carrying costs from year to year, and that's unpredictable and unknown, and that's problematic. So, if we think of those things as design principles, what does, what does the field writ large tell us about special education funding policy out there? And we can think in terms of there are four basic policy strategies that have been used or are being used right now with one overlay. We can think of capitation systems, and Bill mentions a census-based system, it falls under that. We can think of prospective systems, which is very similar to what we do here in terms of reimbursement models. We can think of systems that embed special education funding in the general education funding formula, and we think of these combo approaches. And with any of these, these systems, we can overlay an extraordinary cost reimbursement. And I want to break each one of these out just a little bit, a little bit more detail. The first one is the capitation system. And here, the amount of special education funding a district receives is based on the number of non-disabled students within a school district, and that can be average yearly membership, average yearly attendance. But the key thing, it's not tied to students, the number of students with disabilities, right? It's tied to the school's population. And a lump sum is not based on variation between individual school districts with regard to students with disabilities, okay? It's based on the total population. There are pros with this, if you take in terms, if you take our framework that I just discussed, the pros are that's simple and transparent. It can be well-aligned with policy priorities, particularly around MTSS, or MTSS models, because you basically decategorize your funds. And you're allowing school administrators to look at those funds in turn, that pool of funds as funds that they can use actually on the general education side, as well as serving students with disabilities, which means you can do things like early intervention services, you have flexible groupings with students around ability and needs. It's also predictable. There are cons. There are possible incentives for district to limit services, right? When you have a fixed amount of money, you might feel the squeeze in terms of funding, and you might be incentivized to limit services. And it also, you know, it, it doesn't protect districts against potential cost liabilities, right? The high-cost kid, the autistic kid that comes into a small district, when you have a capitated system where you receive a per pupil amount and you have a child that well exceeds that, local school districts feel that squeeze. And so, that's a potential con with this approach. We also have the prospective systems. And here, this is where districts charge the state a fee for service based on students with disabilities. So, unlike a capitated system, this system is based on the number of students in the system who have disabilities. And there are a number of different ways that this can play out, right? The first one is through single or multiple student weights, right? Where we, we add a weight to our general education formula, either for all students with disabilities, or we come up with separate weights based on a classification or some combination of classification. For example, students with autism might receive a weight of 2.1, versus a student who has a learning disability might be a 1.2. The second idea is, we can think in terms of reimbursement based on teachers or classrooms that serve special education students. Our existing model in Vermont has, has part of that, that our existing model includes this portion of it in our block rate component. And we can also reimburse for the percent of allowable expenditures. We also do this. The pros, it discourages service limitations, right? Because the schools can, aren't held hostage in terms of, well, if I spend over this particular amount for this particular kid, I'm not going to get reimbursed for that. The other pro is, it protects districts against significant cost liabilities. The cons, it lacks simplicity and transparency, it's very difficult to predict, I mean, it's unpredictable, and it potentially misaligned with policy priorities in terms of identification, classification and service delivery. The third one we can think about is this embedded funding formula, and that's where we actually don't have a special education funding formula at all, and a number of states do this. And this is where state funding for special education is incorporated into the overall school funding formula, right? There are assumptions made about the share of students in a particular school that might be eligible for special education or related services, and that, and a dollar, and an average dollar amount around what that would be. And that dollar amount is built into the base general education funding formula. The pros, like capitation, it decategorizes funding around special ed, providing more flexibility with regard to service provision, right? It's also very predictable from a budget standpoint. Your legislature and your school boards know what that's going to look like. The cons, it, again, has potential disincent, potential incentives for districts to limit services because of costs, potential cost liabilities for districts for high-cost kids, and it breaks this link between special education services and supports and funding. And then, we have the extraordinary cost reimbursement. And many of the formulas that are capitated, that are prospective and also embedded include extraordinary cost reimbursement. And this is sort of, this comes out of this notion of a medical insurance model, right? Where if you end up having a child who's a 75, that costs the school district $75,000 a year to serve, that, that depends, particularly for small schools and small districts, that could be a sizable share of the entire school district budget. And the idea is, is that there needs to be some shared risk with regard to the costs around serving those types of students. Extraordinary cost reimbursements mechanisms allow districts to receive additional funds from the state to cover per-student costs over and above some norm standard. In Vermont, we had this, it's $50,000. The pros, it discourages service limitations, right? You're not, schools don't feel necessarily the pressure to limit costly services for students, particularly as they get over $50,000 in Vermont. It protects districts against significant cost liabilities. But the cons are, again, it's unpredictable, it's hard to budget this year to year because it's highly dependent on individual student needs and identification and classification. And there are just incentives for cost containment. In fact, in other states, we've had some policy debate about there may actually be incentives for cost accrual, right? To push, right, to push the cost over the extraordinary cost threshold in order to qualify for additional reimbursement. And then, we've got the combo, right? Which is kind of the kitchen sink approach, right? Where you can have a little bit of everything, right? You can have a cap, you have a little capitation, have a little perspective, you can have a little extraordinary cost, right? And the idea here is that there are a number of states in the country who have selected from the menu of options and packaged, create special education funding policies that are a package of these different approaches. And that really characterizes to some extent Vermont's approach. We were known, although we are reimbursement-based, as having a hybrid approach. And when you do a combo approach, the pros and cons really depend on the mix, right? In terms of which policy levers you pull. So, what do we do here in Vermont? We have a reimbursement model with an extraordinary cost provision. Our reimbursement model is based on a state block grant that's linked to schools' average yearly membership. So, we, a part of our block grant is not linked to the number of students with disabilities. And it's also linked to average special education teacher salaries, and the state pays 60% of this block grant total. We also have an extraordinary cost provision for districts and where districts receive 90% reimbursement from the state for an individual student in excess of $50,000. School districts also receive federal Part V money, and then the remainder, the remainder, what's left over is the local share. And Michael did a good job of it, and I characterize this as voices from the field, and I'll talk about that in a minute. There are critiques of this existing system in Vermont. It's administratively costly, right? The voices from the field that we hear from administrators and policymakers is that it's administratively costly, that funding is misaligned with our policy priorities, particularly MTSS and RTI. There are misplaced incentives for student identification, classification and placement. It discourages cost containment, and it's unpredictable and lacks transparency. But part of the reason I call this, I entitled this as Voices From The Field is, we hear these things, especially if you spend any time in schools, but we actually lack systematic data on many of these items. And while they're, they make intuitive sense, one of the big challenges for moving forward is actually unpacking some of these issues to understand this interplay in a more systematic way. And also, thinking in terms of our prioritization in terms of key goals. As, you know, the state board and the legislature start to move forward, and AOE start to move forward, we're thinking about potentially reforming the special education funding system in Vermont. Our key challenge is thinking about these goals, right? And the priority and the relative weight you put on which goals. They're not necessarily, it may, it may be impossible to maximize on all of them. In fact, it's highly unlikely that you can. The other thing that's going to be real key is developing a better understanding of the problems located in the current system around placement and staffing, the administrative costs and burdens, again, predictability, funding categorization and efficiency and governance. And we've talked a lot about governance already today. And of course, anything that happens around special education funding now in the future is going to be highly dependent on what happens in session in the legislature with regard to general education funding. So, those are my brief remarks.
Thank you very much, and I really appreciate speeding it up. We'll stand in recess until 1:30.
If anyone again.
And we'll start with the item K, pre-K rulemaking status update from Karen.
K for Karen.
I appreciate having me on. We have hearings for the rules set that will be April 7th from 5:30 until 7:30, and we've opened five VIT locations in Lindenville, Macille, Newport, Springfield and Williston. opened five VIT locations in Lindenville, Macilleer, Newport, Springfield, and Williston. There wasn't an available site in southwestern Vermont, but there is a portable VIT site, so we're looking into whether we could bring that somewhere in the Rutland area. We've so far done four webinars. These are archived on the AOE website. We've had excellent participation, 100 or more people in most of them. The first one was an overview, the second one was financial information, the third one was about what schools need to do if they want to establish or expand a program, and last week's was on the pre-qualification process. And from each of those webinars, we've collected questions that will go in our next FAQ document. We have three more planned. The one this week is on the pre-K regions, and then we have two more, one on Head Start and one on special education and Section 504 issues, that we need more information before we can set dates, but they'll happen sometime in April, we hope. We're still waiting for one piece, one piece that needs to go into the second round of guidance that isn't resolved yet, so that's waiting, and it will go out as soon as that's resolved. And we have a second set of frequently asked questions that will go out when that goes out. That's kind of where we are.
What kind of feedback are you getting?
We're getting a lot of questions, and I think people really are trying to understand Act 166 and just what it means for them. We've gotten good feedback on the webinars.
Mark.
What kind of obstacles or perceived obstacles are you receiving or getting?
I don't know if it's obstacles so much as confusion. So there's a lot of confusion about pre-qualification and thinking that, you know, public school programs don't need to be pre-qualified, or programs that were approved under Act 62 don't need to be pre-qualified. But the reality is that every program that's going to receive funds needs to be pre-qualified, and they need to do it as if they were beginning in the fall. There's also, I think, you know, there was a fair amount of confusion about schools being able to establish or expand programs because they only need to apply for that if they're adding an additional classroom or adding an additional teacher. So it's been, you know, just...
All over the place?
Yeah, kind of all over the place. I'm trying to think if there's anything that stands out. I think probably the one that's going to cause the most challenge is the pre-K regions, and that webinar is on Thursday, the geographical boundaries.
Peter?
Certainly, funding is an issue. It's been, hasn't it been delayed a year, the implementation? And I know with budget cuts, both at the state level and concerns at the local level, there's quite a lot of concern about the cost of pre-K and who's going to bear that cost.
In terms of the implementation date, there is an option to put it off a year. About a third of the LEAs are starting in this upcoming school year, and the funding really is an unknown at this point. It's, you know, it's going to cost something.
So...
If you want to move ahead with Act 166, about a third of our districts are moving ahead with Act 166.
And they're receiving funding?
And they will receive funding, as outlined in the law.
And where will that go in terms of funding issues hereafter?
Well, just the remaining two-thirds have to begin the following year. The reason for the transition relief memo is it became clear that some systems were not going to be able to implement due to uncertainties around funding, uncertainties around how they would provide it in that short timeline, that abbreviated timeline. So the relief memo simply gives those districts that absolutely need it the opportunity to delay and plan sensibly for implementation. But anyone who wants to access the education fund to support pre-K can do so.
So may I, there were projected costs that were anticipated relative to this. How has that borne out in terms of what was, what we received last year in terms of those projected numbers and where we may be heading on this front?
Do you mean in terms of what the net cost is?
Yes, in terms of those that aren't, they're getting pre-K and what, you know, the difference will be.
I guess I'm not, I mean, if you are moving ahead under pre-K, you get to count children in pre-kindergarten in your child count, so they would be factored into your per pupil expenditure and factored into your...
But I don't remember if there was thirty districts that weren't offering pre-K. There was a number of districts that weren't offering. Now they're required to offer it.
They have until next year. The transition relief gives them one more year if they need to, to be able to meet the terms of the law. Is that, I think that's the question you're asking.
And also, just in terms of paying for it, are we okay on that front?
The Ed Fund is paying for every child in a district that moved forward with Act 166. As of next year, the Ed Fund will pay for every child who is in pre-K in the state of Vermont and meets those criteria.
And the proposed rate is $3,000 per child.
In the interim, we know we also have an expansion grant from the federal government that will give about $8 million a year for four years, I believe, to support expansion of pre-K seats, particularly targeting children who are high poverty in backgrounds. So there is some transition money also that will help support in the transition.
Where's that grant coming from?
It's a...
Federal?
It's U.S. Department of Education and Health and Human Services.
Okay.
Mark.
That $3,000, that's raised locally, though, isn't it?
There is no local raising of revenue in the state of Vermont, period, because it's all, it's a state education fund.
Okay, but it's part of each school district's budget.
Part of the ADM. Yes, it would be part of their budget. What happens, though, is they get to increase their ADM effectively, so that ends up, it ends up not raising their tax rate.
And they get 48% or something, what's that?
0.45. I think they count as, was it 0.45?
Yeah. And I think that there is a challenge there, and that challenge is that if they overestimate the number of new pre-K students for the first year that they're implementing, they're going to have to reconcile the second year when they have an actual number. So that could mean they had kind of projected for money that they're not going to actually get.
And the converse would happen if they were underestimating?
So Brad has done a number of outreach efforts to talk to business managers and others to help them work through this.
But I think your question is a good one because it is a little bit volatile. We don't know exactly what it will look like until the remaining two-thirds of districts are implementing next year.
Well, I mean, you don't have to go for it to read and hear that this is a mandate, and that when we're all complaining about the cost, I mean, this is just...
Stacy.
Karen, this might fall a little bit outside of rulemaking, so maybe you don't have the answer, but I'm just curious if you are hearing conversations about the number of, about the question of partnering with private providers, and whether or not that seems to be an option that people are taking up, if it seems like more, just what are you hearing about that conversation? Then I guess I have kind of a second.
Act 166 encourages partnerships, and I think one thing that we're hearing is that programs that have not been pre-qualified are trying to meet the quality standards in order to be pre-qualified so that they would have the option of partnering.
I have a slightly different angle to the question, and this may follow into the grant that came in, but the accountability for the Stars program and the pre-qualifications, isn't there some look into how this is going?
There is, there's going to be a large-scale outside evaluation of Stars. The vendor for that has been chosen, but the evaluation will probably take two years to complete. So there will be a very thorough look at the Stars system and with recommendations, should it need to be improved. And I'm not sure, I mean, pre-qualification and Stars are two different things. To be pre-qualified, one of the requirements is that you have at least four Stars, or that you are a three-star program with an approved plan for becoming a four-star program and evidence that you're meeting the requirements in that plan.
And then my other follow-up question would be, the question about Title Funds, since now this is an entitlement and the, as a mandate or an entitlement, that everybody can, any three- or four-year-old can go, so the Title Funds were not to be used, is that still the...
You can't, the Title Funds cannot be used for the first 10 hours, 35 weeks a year.
For the mandate?
Yeah, for the entitlement. I call it an entitlement.
The entitlement, that's, I used both words, sorry.
So Title Funds cannot be used for that entitlement, but they could be used over and above that. And we are hearing from quite a few schools that are increasing the hours of their programs. So the first 10 is paid for by the state funds. Anything above that can be paid for with Title Funds.
And I don't know how familiar you are with Stars, but is the four- and five-star rating, doesn't that tie to a program that's longer than 10 hours a week?
I'm not familiar enough with Stars. I mean, it doesn't sound like the kinds of things considered part of Stars.
So one of the things I had understood was to be pre-qualified. You had to have two, three, or almost four Stars in order to... I'll pass and ask it next time. I'll reframe it for next time. So I guess my question is, they have to be, they have to go through the Stars program in order to do the pre-qualification?
They have to go through the Stars, yes.
And then in the sort of zero-to-three area, you don't get state subsidy unless you're at a certain level of Stars as well.
Right. And we've had to sort through, not only what does this mean for Title Line funds, but also what does it mean for subsidies?
And the subsidies come from the Building Bright Futures. I mean, that's how you authorize them, right?
I think the subsidies come through the Division, the Child Development Division in AHS. And subsidies are for childcare. The state tuition is for preschool education.
Can I ask about the childcare? I know that's an issue in terms of a shortened program, and if you have a working couple, how is that youngster being cared for? And you're looking at whether it's local childcare or whatever. Can you just give me an overview of what's happening on that front?
Well, I think there are basically two things that happen. If a child is attending a public school program that does not have an extended childcare portion, and there aren't that many that do, then that child would have to go from the pre-K program at the school to childcare.
And can I ask, relation to that, is there instances of transportation provided for that?
I don't believe so. But there has to be some arrangement made because parents are working. A lot of the partner programs provide the childcare in addition to the preschool education.
Have we got any way of checking to see our data that we're collecting that would look at this question as being perhaps discriminatory in that poor kids would not necessarily have as much access as richer kids? Are the choice program and the private providers attracting a different clientele than the public programs? Seems like these are incredibly important questions that we should collect data on.
Yeah, I think I would agree with you, and we won't be able to do that until it happens. At this point, it's going to be somewhat dependent on how many places, how many school districts choose to create pre-K regions, so their geographic boundaries. It's, you know, it's going to be dependent on the partnerships that are formed, it's going to be dependent on what the school programs do in terms of expanding hours, so I think that's important data to collect. We need to be ready to collect it, but we won't be, we won't have any data to collect really for at least the end of next year for a limited number of LEAs.
Mark?
Oh, she's been trying.
Oh, Stacy.
Sorry, well, just, I think this is more of a comment, I guess, than a question, but to tag on, I guess, to Bill's, the things we should keep an eye out for and watch out for. From what I've heard, kind of from my Building Bright Futures State Advisory Council role, there is some concern, especially among the private providers, that if more three- and four-year-olds get pulled into the public system, the structural framework that allows a childcare provider to operate is, because of the child ratios, it needs those three- and four-year-olds to provide enough tuition to also pay the infant toddler teachers who operate on a much smaller ratio. And are we, might we by accident create a situation where we put private providers in a place where they can't stay open and therefore we're losing all that desperately needed infant toddler? I don't think that was obviously anyone's intention, but it's a concern I'm hearing. I think as long as we're talking about things to look out for, that's something we should just all keep an eye out as things, it's not obviously directed away to you or rulemaking, but I think we should keep our eye on.
And I can tell you, there have been two different regions where there has been concern on the part of the private providers, that what was going on at the public school was going to affect them. And when staff went to talk to people in both of those instances, there really wasn't anything to be concerned about.
That's good.
But it's, you know, it is something to keep an eye on.
There's also limits on what public schools are allowed to do. So if that is what you're hearing, my guess is there's something else going on as well because they aren't allowed to actually expand options.
Mark?
What is our timetable in terms of the whole rulemaking process now that we've delayed it for a year?
The rulemaking process is behind schedule because of this one unresolved issue that is still unresolved. We took any language that had to do with that out of the rules, so it can move forward now.
And so what might that look like in terms of our involvement? Do we know that yet?
I think instead of, we had hoped to be coming back to you in April. I think we're probably going to be coming back to you realistically. We'd love to make it May, but I think more realistically June.
Certified teacher oversight on these programs, you have to have a certified teacher, and sometimes the private providers don't have that. So they'd have to get that from the central office or whomever. And I know that in some instances, they felt like the charge for that service was, they weren't too happy about it. Do you know anything about...
Yeah, there is a requirement for a licensed teacher. Sometimes, so one thing we've seen already is a big increase in the requests for provisional licenses to become, you know, licensed with an endorsement, either in early childhood education or early childhood special education. There are arrangements for in-kind work with school districts, so there are many places with the partnerships already where the school will send a licensed teacher into a private program for the, whatever number of hours that program is providing preschool education. There is a provision for, I've learned so much about this. There is a provision for home providers, that they can have supervision by a licensed teacher.
I don't know where it was, but there was some effort to look at getting philanthropic support for mentorship for people seeking certification or working in private providers. So there are a number of parallel initiatives going on to make sure there are not only enough educators, but there are also support and mentoring for people who are in those private settings.
Right.
There's a minimum amount of time that that oversight has to occur, isn't there? I mean, on a weekly basis?
A provisional license would give someone two years in order to meet the requirements to be fully licensed.
But I mean, in terms of the certified oversight on these programs, isn't there a minimum time that they have to actually be doing that?
Yes, and I don't know, I couldn't tell you that right now. I'll make sure I know it by next time.
So will we see you in April or May, or just when you come back for the final approval of June?
You'll see me in May or June, unless you want to get an update.
It was a pleasure to see you, but thank you very much. Thank you.
The public hearings for rulemaking, will we have to hold those or we...
That's what she's doing. Public hearings on rulemaking?
April 7th, 5:30 to 7:30 at five or possibly six VIT sites, and we'll have someone to moderate at each site.
April 7th.
Just one.
We can send out, why don't we send out information? Well, it's one, but it's silent.
Right, but none in southern Vermont.
Springfield.
Shawn Marie's house.
That's not southern.
We need a VIT site down there.
I skipped over it, too. Let's move on to the secretary's report.
All right, thank you, Karen. So the first one, I think, has been partially addressed by Krista and Bill, but just to update you on the financial circumstances of the agency, and I think the easiest way to introduce this is that whereas the field approves budgets and then we fund to the budgets they approve, the reality of state government is we figure out how much money we have to spend, and then we have to figure out how to budget to what's being allocated or what's available to spend. So we budget to funding, and the funding that we have available is declining. And it probably is not a one-year event, it's probably going to happen next year as well. So at the Requesting Administration, we have put together a proposal to offer our suggestions on what our cuts or our proposed cuts are. And in doing so, I just wanted to tell you that our two priorities that we have used to guide any decision about what we put on the table was that our primary commitment is to support continuous improvement of learning for learners in pre-K through 12. So first of all, that's our core mission, and that's what we're using to define the core mission of the agency. And then the second piece of that is to try as much as possible to preserve resources, both human and fiscal, around supporting implementation of EQS. both human and fiscal, around supporting implementation of EQS and including the EQR's, the Education Quality Reviews, so that those are going to be our priorities in terms of what we're going to preserve. But I just need to say that this is, this is a tough, tough year. It's a tough year for us. It's a tough year for the legislature. There are many programs around the state that are feeling it's tough. We're making our cuts. The legislature is making its own cuts out of our budget, and this is just the way we're going to be. And I just ask us all to bear in mind that none of these programs would be cut in a flush time. We are just spending beyond our capacity at this point, and we need to really think about how we organize ourselves to deliver, given the constraints that we're going to be facing now and moving forward. And we're pretty optimistic. We're making some efforts within the agency to achieve efficiencies. Some of them I've spoken about. Others are really shifting some of the operations, trying to move all our grants into an automated system so that we can reduce the amount of staff time involved with creating those, so that we're creating, we're really trying to free up human resources for the really important hands-on work, which is really what education's about, by maximizing efficiency in some of those areas. So we really see that as a multi-year conversation that we're starting, and we will be building systematically over the next couple of years, just to try to squeeze where we can, look for ways to achieve efficiencies and things that are sort of peripheral, to create resources and capacity for what we care about.
How many positions do you suspect you'll be losing?
Well, we don't know yet. What I can tell you is that we also have positions that we can't afford to fill at the moment, and I'll skip to the next item in my agenda.
Before you move on, and just so we're clear, and you were part of the conversation earlier today, is that, as I heard, it's the consensus of this board that if we're going to move ahead with dramatic changes in school governance, that additional staffing is going to be required, and that's what we'll represent to the legislature. I understand that you can't go and do that, but it is one of those rare moments where we may be on different sides of that issue. But we didn't get into this detail, and we don't need to, but from my position, first of all, if there is going to be additional staff added for the change in governance, it ought to be at the agency first, and secondly, at the board level, if we even get there. But I just want to say that out loud, so, because I know you're not going to be there supporting that, but, you know, we, and I fully understand why, and I fully understand how you really feel, but I understand the circumstances, too. I just wanted to say that out loud.
What I will say is a challenge that we have in Vermont is that we want a lot, but the reality of the agency is only about 23% of our funding comes from the state.
Right.
And all the federal funding has strings attached. It cannot, for example, support pre-K. It can't support a bunch of other functions, and it certainly can't support governance initiatives, because those are really state initiatives. So the general fund, the state funding that we have available, we are prioritizing around critical issues. Some of our challenge is going to be continuing to meet our statutory requirements as we try to maintain capacity in the areas that are most important. And again, that's an ongoing iterative process for us as well. One of the challenges, you know, one of the next pieces I wanted to address is that we are a little bit behind on doing the rule review for secondary approval. Part of the challenge is we are using resources from two unfilled positions to support the initial pre-K implementation. And we don't know, we have a proposal in to have the, part of the existing EEI grant repurposed to support pre-K positions to support implementation. But the challenge is figuring out how to meet all those guidance, those things. And depending what happens, and depending where the legislature is and what decisions it needs to make, we may have to look at other strategies for achieving some of our pieces of our work, including contracting out, for example, for an external expert to do a review of rules. And that's what we are currently exploring as an option. So we're just going to have to, we have, we know what we have to do. We are just going to have to be a little bit more creative about how we do it at this point.
Did the federal grant help you at all in pre-K?
It doesn't support, yes. I mean, there is some support provision. Part of the challenge is also, we, you know, and this is the same thing we're being very mindful of, for example, with education quality reviews, is we have to build and structure with an eye to long-term sustainability. So we can't use one-time funds for continuing state imperatives, because what you're doing is you're creating a level of service in an expectation that we don't have any ability to support. So what we are trying to do is make sure that we're freeing up permanent capacity to support permanent programs, and then maintain the one-time funding for one-time initiatives. So for example, the legislature very generously made available some resources that we can use to support development of the education quality review process and some of the protocols. We don't want to use that money to support the reviews, because that has to be something we have to figure out how to fund and support internally. So, you know, again, I'm, perhaps my, I'm an eternal optimist. We are working hard. People are doing tremendous work. We are looking at some issues around, for example, moving accountability for federal purposes up to the state, the SU level, which would free up a lot of capacity in some of our internal divisions to do technical support and work around the EQR's. So I think if we can continue to be creative and clarify what are our sort of compliance obligations, and what do we need to do to do them well, and what's the best level to do them, we can actually be meeting that intent, but also free up capacity for other things that we know are essential.
How are you doing on ILPs?
PLPs?
Personalized...
Personalized learning programs. I mean, we've done, one of the other things that we've done, and it's actually, we're getting a lot of positive feedback from the field, and it's, is that instead of developing at the agency a prototype or a model and then pushing it out and saying, "You have to do it this way," what we've been doing is using incentive grants to invite teams of educators in real districts in trying to target different kinds of systems, you know, the big, more urban systems, the small, more rural systems, so that we have examples of what PLPs look like in different contexts, develop it, curate it, and then make it available through the website and through professional development opportunities around the state. And what we're finding is that that's a much more effective, the tools that are developed are more true to the experience of schools, but it also is involving more of the public in that development process in a way that seems to be, seems to be motivating to people. We're getting very positive feedback.
And the role grants must be helping to some degree.
I mean, philanthropy is a wonderful thing, and, you know, certainly that there's wonderful it has really moved the conversation in terms of teacher-led innovation in the state. The problem of a state government is if it's a core function of government, it really needs to be supported by government, or it's not sustainable, and it's not permanent, and it isn't public. And so that we can certainly tap into and experience the benefit of some of those projects. But to the extent that we want state initiatives, they really need to be developed with state dollars. And so that's been kind of a challenge there, which isn't to diminish in any way that work. And many of the folks who've been part of those PLP planning grants or the current innovation grants around proficiency-based learning are people who've been involved with role and fells in one way or the other. And we welcome the wisdom and the time and the energy that they bring to that process. So that said, the next piece, I want to invite you, there is a series of meetings that are designed to look at the education quality reviews, and I have asked Perry to send you the announcement. Anyone, we probably will not be able to accommodate everybody who wants to come, but I want to encourage you to think about participating. If you do come, you will have to commit to two full days for these EQR summits, we're calling them, April 23rd and May 29th. And the purpose is really to get input from the field regarding the quality reviews and what they could, what they need to look like to sort of capture the essence of what education quality standards are. So if you look in your mailbox, Perry will send that your way. And that's really, oh, oh, how could I forget? So I wanted to hand you this out. There was a, just because this may, this may, let me just flip these. This may have come to your mailbox as well. Just to give you an update on where we are, one of the, I know the core priorities of this board has been education equity, and I just wanted to send this out to you as a notice. Last Friday, we noticed that the NCS, the National Center for Education Statistics, which is part of the U.S. Department of Education, had come out with a, was proposing, they come out with a report that said that Vermont was the second most inequitable state in the country in terms of education funding for students in poverty. And we immediately saw the data and realized it couldn't be right. And the governor's office was very, very concerned about this as well, in part because of its long and demonstrated commitment to equity. So we began to work with the numbers and replicate their study, and were able to figure out that there's just no way that could be true. So we replicated the study using our available data and found the opposite finding, and that's in the table on the back side. So whereas the U.S. Department of Education had concluded that there was about a negative, I think it was negative 18% differential between what students in high poverty and students in low-poverty districts receive, we found the opposite. It was actually a positive difference, particularly when you start counting in the special education. So it was interesting for two reasons, and I think it illustrates the continuous challenge that we have. When you are a very complicated state, it's very difficult to apply standardized rules to us to make sense of what's going on. So really, the federal government is staggering under some of the same challenges we have with analysis locally. In this case, they came up with an erroneous finding about the funding equity in the state. It was, we called them immediately and told them we had real concerns about their numbers. Unfortunately, despite that, they did go out and make a press conference in which they used us as an example of funding inequity. And we did follow up with them. We had conversations with them yesterday. Actually, this morning, we got a phone call or apology. So U.S. Department of Education has now acknowledged that their data was incorrect. And I just hand this out to you because I have no doubt, because this story did go viral, and because it was used in a press conference by Secretary Duncan, you may be asked by some of your colleagues about this. Since we like to say we're an equitable state, now it's national news that we're not. This may come up, so I wanted to make sure this was available to you so you could correct the record if it does come back to you.
So are they going to do something? Yeah.
They are not doing anything that we're aware of. So we received a phone call from a staffer at the NCS.
Saying whoops?
No, it was actually somebody who was really concerned and expressed a personal apology. So it's a challenge for us because it is a priority, and it becomes a diversion from focusing on the real challenge. And for me, the real challenge and the warning to the country, despite our professed commitment to equity, we should all be taking heed when relative fiscal equity doesn't actually get you equity of opportunity or equity of outcome. So the real lesson to us is it's not enough, and we need to figure out what to do. And then the last piece, I just wanted to update you. I know I'd mentioned it to some of you in confidence because it was embargoed, but we had asked a year ago, Smarter Balance Assessment, to put together a white paper, which talked about the appropriate and inappropriate uses of testing. And it has been a long and protracted conversation. While you were discussing the resolution this morning, they actually had sent me confirmation that the paper is done. They're doing the final editing and proofing, and it should be out. One of the reasons we were committed to Smarter Balance as opposed to some of the options, it is seated at a research university. It has a technical advisory committee composed of research specialists and academics, and it doesn't sell a lot of products around test preparation and educational materials. They were willing to take this on. This was an incredible act of courage on their part, because they're going to be talking about the tools that they've created, and its technical limits, and its technical promise. That's brave in a climate, a political climate, which does not value subtlety. Anything that they say about their test applies to every single test that's out there. It should not be an excuse to not use Smarter Balance. In fact, for me, it's a reason to use Smarter Balance, because they're actually honest about the car they're asking us to drive. So I will send that to you. I'll have Perry send it out as soon as we get the final version. But I did want you to know that, and I think you'll find that many of the points they make in that paper really are consistent and support some of the points you made in your resolution.
Terrific, thank you. Okay, let's move on to item L, Strategic Plan, Looking Ahead. Bonnie's going to lead this discussion, but what the thought is that we went through a very arduous, very well-thought-out strategic planning process. Great leadership, and what we, what we did a while ago is that every month, we scheduled a piece of the strategic plan to make sure that we were staying on top of it. So that's kind of what we're hoping to do today, is see if we can come up with a plan to keep, make sure that we're working on this on a monthly basis.
So I thought you were going to do this while I was gone last month.
Oh, but we passed it.
Oh, but you couldn't do it without me. Okay, so I'm basically making it up as I go along. I know what we had talked about doing. Is that really loud? Or is it just sounding really loud to me?
It sounds like a little feedback.
Oh, okay. So what we talked about doing is making sure that we kept this document alive, and it wasn't something that got put on the shelf. And I think in the way in which we wrote it, it's really hard to put it on the shelf, and that was definitely the desire. And thinking about it, I know that, it must have been two meetings ago, what we said we would do is there's a number of things that we identified that we needed more information, we needed to define the issue and explore it further. And we talked about coming up with ways identifying those things, and then maybe each month saying, "We'll have a conversation, invite people in who can help inform our thinking, and then move forward from there as we develop what we're doing." So in thinking about that as an option, I didn't want to decide what it was that, what we talked about, since it's our strategic planning. But I did come up with this just sort of table that we can use, and I can change, I'll work, I can work from it while we talk. But I thought we might brainstorm some pieces or issues that people want to get more information on, and then we can put them on the calendar and decide who's responsible for making whatever happens, happens. Where I got a little confused, once you see this, is we have two goals, and they're sort of designed, you know, first year, second year, and then year three to five. It's actually kind of a lot to work on potentially at each meeting, so we can have that conversation in terms of how you think we can go forward. I mean, I think a good example, just from this morning, was Krista's asking for some more information or more conversation around local control and what that looks like and what it means, and how does it impact different. So that might be one that we would put on an agenda item on one of our meetings. So this is what I thought might help us sort of structure us moving forward. And it's, I did it last night at 10 o'clock, so. If it doesn't work for you, let me know. We can adjust it. I'm not married to it, but I thought it would help us get started. And did everybody get a copy of our strategic plan?
Bonnie, are you thinking that goal two would come after, or are you thinking they would line up on the same, in the same, kind of one and two at the same time?
Well, that's the, that's the question on the floor, because I think that, I think it partly depends on how full our agendas are every month. So sometimes they're really full, and we can do more than one, but sometimes, I mean, this morning's conversation with special ed was really quick, but it was a good, we didn't, there was a lot more, I think people would have loved to have engaged in a further conversation. So if we want to really have what we're doing be substantive, I think we probably want to do one thing at a time.
Especially while the legislature is still in session.
Exactly. We don't even know what's, exactly.
Next meeting or two are going to be, I think.
That's going to inform what we do also.
Well, this looks good to me. Everyone?
There's a question of scope.
Yeah, that's...
First bullet under the first year, identify and define nature of achievement, opportunity, and financial gaps.
It's big, isn't it? We can do that in one meeting.
But I think part of that answer was, came out of this morning.
Yep.
I mean, so I guess what I was thinking, listening to the two people this morning, was how can we frame policy around special ed or just even looking to see where it is in the rules and manuals or where it lies in statute to see what role we even could play in that. So, I mean, that's kind of what came up, especially with the second person talking about policy. And the first person is not, did not do the report that was actually done by the fiscal office. And that hasn't even come out yet with the paraeducators. So there's like just tons of information.
So actually, I did this wrong, now that I'm looking at it. I put in dates, but really where I have, where it says year two and says a creation of white papers regarding potential solutions, that would not happen in May. So I'm taking that out. Nor would it happen in June, because that's really year two, three. And so really, let's just focus on the first year, one, which says identify and define nature of achievement. And then I think probably the next three meetings are around that. So that was sort of, and then, does that make more sense? I sort of, I sort of jumped way ahead really fast. Right.
So to get us going, could you be the person responsible to start us off in April on that?
Okay, maybe.
Or Bonnie, I might, I might be able to jump. I don't know.
I mean, only because, guess what I'm doing next month?
Perry, have we rescheduled with Robin from Let's Grow Kids? Do you know?
I don't have anything concrete.
So I've been trying to get Robin Friedner-McGuire from Let's Grow Kids to come talk about the public awareness campaign around early education. And when we're talking about the nature of the achievement and opportunity... And when we're talking about the nature of the achievement and opportunity gap, I love the idea of us gathering the data from lots of different sources. And I think the early childhood lens is a really important one. So when Robin's, she was supposed to come, I think, last month. Everyone was sick, she couldn't come, but she has her presentation queued up along with our strategic plan in mind. And so if she can come in April, I think Julie Coffey from Building Bright Futures was also interested in coming. I don't know if that, how that tags up, but that to me feels like a great way to identify achievement and opportunity gaps in terms of where they all start before we even get them.
Well, to get us going on this, let's leave it that you'll follow up and see if they can attend.
Yep, I'll put Stacy.
If they can't, then you, or let Bonnie know. And then between the two of you, either through that presentation or through your thoughts, get us going on this process.
And you think that's not a problem for April, given how busy the legislature?
No.
Following up on Sharm Rees, is part of this process to determine where we are on these particular issues as the board? I mean, you know, what is our, what is our role?
It's more of a discipline, I think, to not only see where we are, but just make sure we stay on the policy level, as opposed to getting into operations.
So this is our, oops. Sorry, sorry. It dialed itself. So the manual on rules and practices is what we have authority over. So a couple months ago, we asked to start review of the online virtual schools, which I see was actually presented in depth to the legislature over the last couple of weeks.
Oh, really?
Yes.
It was?
It was. I can't remember where, but it was presented, how many online?
Do you know what committee?
I don't know, but I think it was, they had VTC come in, which I know is high school, but it also had to do with John Fisher's report in Act 77.
I wasn't, that's different than from what you're considering.
Right, so I just think that.
It's from my virtual learning class. It's secondary, it's different.
Not post-secondary. So we decided we needed to look at the rules because we, it still talks about, what was the phrase, correspondence schools back in 1990. So we, as a board, decided we were going to go through some of the things that we have authority over to make sure that they actually align with.
What document are you referring to, that you're looking at?
It's somewhere online.
But I'm not sure how that relates to this conversation.
Well, he was asking, because I was talking about the special ed, like if policy falls into that somewhere, which then led to, are we getting enough information from early ed, regular ed?
To inform?
To inform our decision-making.
I think, if I remember the intent, the intent was to spend the first year trying to understand the issues and the challenges, so that the board could approach them more substantively from a policy perspective in year two. And I think the conversation, we've got pre-kindergarten, we've got special education, and then we've got financial equity. So we've got three different issues that are related to that issue of equity, and we don't have yet as a focus. So it may be that out of a series of explorations, we can come up with a common theme, and then that will drive the policy agenda.
All right, so we'll work from this, and we'll develop it at the next meeting, but Stacy will follow up and see if we can get that presentation, and she'll be in touch with Bonnie to make sure that we're, that we stay on course here. Mark?
Okay, so once the bill that's currently in front of us, and, or in front of the state, is, at what point and where on the strategic plan will it come into play when districts start coming to us with their merger plans, and we start defining successful districts versus non-successful districts? When does, when and how does that all take place?
Probably not until we know what the legislation actually says.
Well, I mean.
Well, one of the things we were hoping to do is, and we haven't had a chance to talk to Stephen about this, but is to bring Amy Fowler back to this group to start talking about the education quality reviews and what we're calling, which we're going to have two components. One is sort of an annual snapshot, which will include a variety of indicators across a variety of dimensions, academic performance, but also, you know, breadth of opportunities to learn, support for professional development and learning, a bunch of fiscal indicators and school climate. And then also the integrated field visits, which are really an opportunity to go and look in more depth at issues. And she was hopefully going to come and sort of give you an orientation to that work as it's developing, so you can begin to see the tools that we're trying to develop, and eventually are going to ask for your support or feedback on, to address some of these quality issues.
Because the school districts are going to need that first, and we're either going to have to support that or not support it when they come forward.
And if something happens along the lines that are being talked about, we should have done that yesterday. Meaning that we're going to do these indicators, we have to do that, they have to be validated, they have to be put up to the field and given a chance to work, and then we look at it in terms of evaluation plan. That's, we're already, that's a wonderful example of how the timelines are too quick.
We are piloting a climate survey now. It's a nationally, it is, it's a well-developed study used for long periods of time in other areas, so I think that the validation, that would be a little bit quicker than it would have been if we tried to do one from scratch ourselves. And we did that in part because it would serve the interest of comparability. But you're right, that's a real challenge, but it's our reality. I mean, it's, in truth, some of what you're being asked to do, you in theory have the authority to do, but you can't do because you don't have robust, you don't have robust information. We never developed robust systems to actually let you do so with any kind of credibility.
And if this bill does pass, and we get into two years out reviewing all of these applications, whatever we call them, we're going to run out of time as a board in a real quick hurry.
Well, that's why it's going to be important to get as much done sooner than, rather than later.
Can we, do we have any influence in terms of what that timeline looks like as it comes?
I think that's.
Well, that's one of the things we brought to you this morning, is asking for the authority to delay.
Yeah, okay.
Waive the dates. Do we get that or not?
Well, it makes me think that, what we were talking about this morning was giving the delay to local districts who are coming up with their plans. We didn't talk as much about pushing that two-year date out to three years or something like that.
That's what I would be suggesting. So even with.
I think there's separate issues here. I mean, one is, one is people need to move, I mean, before there's, you can evaluate them anyway. I mean, I think that there may be, there may be multiple things happening at the same, there has to be, yeah.
There has to be a sort of a deadline to get started, and then if, for whatever reasons during your expiration.
Well, we certainly know from experience, you know, if you put this off, it's just going to get put off. That's why I think the two-year dates, I fully appreciate the problem Bill's raising, but I think it's, we ought to get going.
I think it's worth, sorry, go ahead.
It's just, you need some rules to play by, though. So if everybody starts making up their own rules, and then they come to us, because then we're making stuff in the meantime, and they get frustrated, because then they come to us, and they're like, well, we came up with this idea, but now you have this different criteria. So I think, if you go to your point, we actually.
And if we're inconsistent on the rules, we've got troubles.
Right, and so if this were to happen, and it's almost in June, we, you know, so it's, I agree with your point. So if the timeline's.
I understand everyone's apprehension, but we're in no, no position now to figure it out. We've got to know what the playing field is like before we can do it.
I also think you should come to that education quality review session, because the reality is there's a finite number of measures that we can work with. They have to be reliable, they have to be mature collection, so we know what they're measuring. That's going to constrain what goes in there, and I think you, by June, we'll have a pretty good idea of what our parameters are. I mean, we're pushing this ahead. So I think that if you come to that conversation, it might address some of your questions. There's going to be a finite number of measures that we can use, because for all the reasons we don't want to use tests when we're not sure about their reliability, we don't want to use climate surveys if we're concerned about their reliability either, or performance assessment. So we need to, there's a limited number of tools we can actually credibly put into that kind of annual snapshot. And then the quality reviews, it's really about identifying the critical elements of the education quality standards that may be difficult to collect data on in a quantifiable way, but that you may need to actually go and observe to get more detailed.
Does that put us in Catch 22? Without those kind of system changes, you're not going to get the data that you need to approve those system changes?
I guess, I guess what I would say to you is, welcome to my world. I've never worked in education where that hasn't been a conundrum, and it's, I mean, that's, I mean, so the issue is you're just trying to incrementally make things better. That's what we're trying to do. I think we're in a better place now than we were a year ago, and, you know, on that front, and we're just going to keep working to make it better.
Okay, so we're set on the strategic plan and what we're going to try to do next.
Do we, I just want one other question. Do we want to set anything for May, our May meeting?
Let's, I would, I'm guessing that this may, this may lap over, so that's why I'm saying we are.
I'm good. Throw that one away, I'll share the new one that I'm working on with you.
We'll see if you can get it done sometime before 10 o'clock on the day before the meeting.
Yeah, okay. Anytime you want to come, anytime you, anytime you want to come be principal of my building, I'll be happy to do that.
She's up at six in the morning today.
All right. Let's move on to Dylan's proposal, Youth Education.
Did we adopt the strategic plan?
No.
No, we did.
Oh, yeah, that was in January.
We did.
That's on there.
Yeah.
Oh, it says vote on here.
Yeah, I don't know, we don't need to vote on.
No.
But if we had wanted to vote, we needed to put.
Ah, okay, we don't need to vote.
That's whatever.
Because the choir wasn't allowed.
Thank you. That's why you have, we have you.
We're moving on to the youth educate, proposed Youth Education Alliance of Vermont. Dylan?
Yes, so if you could all direct your attention to this sheet, and not the one with that stapled in the corner, but the one that's stapled on the left, practically, that's the most recent one. So the changes that are made since last meeting were basically, is kind of summarized in the executive summary, in the second paragraph, one, two, three, four, in the fifth line, it says, "What's more, the Youth Education Alliance of Vermont would elect three potential full-voting senior representatives and three junior student representatives for nomination, in which the governor would ultimately approve or disapprove of said nominations." And so as of right now, all of you obviously know that you were appointed to the board by the governor, and this would not change that, it would just, it would advise this process of doing so. And it would allow the students to properly represent, or properly elect, and I really feel that the students will know whoever sent them the best, and I feel like this is a good way to do that.
So this sets up a nominating process under existing law for the governor to make the two student appointments?
Yes.
Ally, do you happen to have a copy of this?
I do. The one with the red staples?
It's not the one with the red staples. I'll give her one with the one.
Oh, I haven't seen the one.
You don't have the red staples?
The last one. Correct.
Well, this is, he's pointing out a revision in the second paragraph in the executive
What it says here, though, to me, is different from what you said, Stephen.
Okay.
I think what you just said is that they would nominate to be appointed by the governor. This says that they're electing.
You're not in the double staples.
I'm not in the double, okay, there you go. That's me from the end.
We're supposed to have them elect.
You said the double staples.
The one with the doubles, not the left.
Double staples.
Sorry.
Okay, got it. Sorry, I just had repeated the same mistake.
Whoa. That was taped, was it?
It's 2:30. Time to go.
But that's only for the first year, right? Because then, once it starts rotating, the junior becomes the senior. So this was, this would be year one?
Yes.
And then they would continue to nominate the next one?
So the junior would move up to the senior.
All right, but then the, this alliance would recommend three for the next spot?
Yes.
Sort of like we do for the secretary.
One of the questions I had was these, the regional youth alliance groups around the state. Currently, they're not all around the state, correct? So how does, how does somebody who's not part of an allegiance become part, so there isn't technically anybody that is under any sort of position in this group.
It's a group that's like proposed to be started. So there's me and Daniel, the person that's helping to get this together, we're the heads as of right now, trying to organize this group. So there will eventually be people that are representing regionally. We just don't have those representatives.
Have you contacted different students from different areas in the state on this proposal?
We are going to. We're going to put out it into the media of our plan.
So I know in Massachusetts, when this program's running on, that had three staff members at the agency that were running it. So this is where, like, just going on Rebecca's comments, because there's actually someone I grew up with, this was her job, she ran this program, and there were three staff members. So what do you foresee? Because one thing I didn't see in here, yeah, the money, because it talked about stipends and all sorts, but there was no budget. And like, I was wondering how much this would cost and what budget it would be proposed to come out of. Because that was declared to me, because it's not the idea of concept involving students, but how realistically do you make that happen? How do you, because to start it, you need people going around the state, which has costs, and putting it all together. So did that, has that played into, in the conversation, or do you have a mock-up proposal for a budget and how much it would cost?
I mean, I don't have a proposal for what the budget would be right now, but I mean, that's something that we could put together, I think, yeah. Maybe we'd look into the model in Massachusetts and see what they're doing. Obviously, we would adapt it to the needs of Vermont, but.
Rebecca?
Just a question. I mean, one of the things that we've found is sometimes it's easier to get to scale by using existing structures, and I know there is a Vermont Council of Student Councils, and I wondered if you'd had a conversation with them? Because that's an existing statewide group that brings together the heads of student councils who are themselves elected in turn, and that's an existing structure that already needs and has monthly meetings.
Right.
And that, in some ways, this seems like a duplicate version. So I mean, I think the connect, what you're offering here that's different from what that is, is the connection between that existing student body, which is well-developed and ongoing, and the State Board of Education. So maybe there's a way to partner with them to think about whether to put, and they're already supported by their schools, so they're already funded to exist. But what we need to do is make the link between, I think, existing leadership for students and the next level. This is just a thought. That might be a way to access an existing support structure. And we can give you the name of the student who's in charge of that.
That's basically the way the state college boards gets its student membership through the process.
And then the other resource that I would think about is, and you could ask them if they've used it, is there is a capacity for simulta, there's plenty of opportunities for simultaneous meetings online. I mean, we have technological capacities to allow virtual meetings.
Right.
And certainly, given the distances, it's not just a transportation issue, it's a distance issue getting kids from, you know, the corners of the state, and that's something I would really strongly encourage you to pursue. And I find students are much more comfortable with those in general than the adults, because they are more comfortable with those platforms.
So do you want to follow up with the student council, or you want to, or do you want to take action today?
I mean, ideally, we'd take action today, but I think maybe a meeting with my colleague and try to figure out some of this and make it a little more clear for me would make more sense.
Makes sense to me.
Folks comfortable with that?
Uh huh.
Okay. Look, we really applaud you.
Yeah, thank you.
And, you know, looking at a system that's going to involve more students in the educational system. It's, and I appreciate the change that you made, and once you follow up with the student council, and see if there's something that you can tag on to there, so.
Okay, sure.
Any other business that?
Can I just interject? There's a follow-up. I've been working with Helen Beatty, and on the 29th of April, there's going to be a, from 2:00 to 3:00, 3:30 in the State House, putting students at the center, celebrating Vermont's vision for learning. And it's really about student voice, and this is particularly in regards to Act 77. Having been involved in that, we went through that whole process in terms of personal learning plans and never considered what the value of the student voice was in that. This is really going to be addressing that, and there's going to be an interesting example how that can work out, trying to, trying to solve problems. So you'll get, you'll get, we will all get information on that, but.
And I'll be there.
Yeah.
Peter, can you just repeat what day?
29th of April, 2:00 to 3:30. It's going to be a busy time, and we have backup.